Okay, folks, we will come to order now. Welcome. There's a few seats here in the front. If you can find a seat, please make yourselves comfortable. Thank you again and welcome. We will come to order. Cory, when you're ready, call the roll.
Councilmember Haskell?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Here.
Mayor Alps?
Here. Onto our first, our first event. On a night when we are considering the conclusion of what's been a fairly long testing process, we start with something that reminds us of why we go through these things to begin with. We are presenting the first ever Founder's Award to two of our finest, longest standing volunteers, Sue Crane and Gary Nielsen. I'm going to start by listing their volunteer service or some of their volunteer service. I don't think we have time for all of them. We're only going to be here six hours. And I'm going to, I'm going to go through them together because there's a lot of parallels. And because obviously I've been here since 2006. I've, I've, I've known you both. I think of you. You run together in my mind, so I'm going to go through the achievements as once. Both Sue and Gary started their service to the town in the 60s. In 1964, Sue started teaching as a volunteer pottery teacher at the PV schools. She did that for about 10 years. Gary started serving in the 60s also. In 1969, he became a board of, a member of the Board of Directors of the Los Trancos Water Commission. Correct me if I get any of this wrong, guys. That was some of their first service. They also moved on to volunteering for the town. From 1977 to 1982, Sue was on the committee which ultimately purchased the school campus from the Portola Valley School District, all the land behind us, which used to be the school. That Sue was on the committee that bought that for the town. And later in 2001 to 2006, Gary sat on two committees, which eventually turned that, that school campus into the town center campus. We all, we all know, we all enjoy today. So local government is a team sport, but the campus behind us for tonight is the house that Sue and Gary built. They both moved on to serving the town on our Commissions and Council. Sue from 1982 to 1990 was a council member. She was mayor in 1985 and 1989. Gary during that time was an ASCC Commissioner from 1984 to 1989, and a Planning Commissioner from 1989 to 1992. Gary then joined the council in 1992 to 2000 and was mayor in 1994 and 1998. After their time on the council, they both continued their service to the town and, and the community. Sue, Sue became a Secretary to the Board of Directors of Peninsula Open Space Trust from 1990 to 2001. She also served on the Our Friends of the Library Committee from 2010 to 2021, serving as its president from 2015 to 2018. She planned, helped plan the sequoia's sequoicentennial celebration for the school district. In 2011, she was on a committee to plan the town's 50th anniversary events in 2014. Gary, after stepping off of the councils, joined two committees in 2000. The Finance Committee where he served for 15 years and the Open Space Committee, which he still serves on today. Let's see. Gary just recently retired as our Police Commissioner. And even now Sue is serving on the Sequoias Residence Advisory Board. Again, that is just some of the things they have done to serve the town and the community, not all. And that is an amazing list of achievements, but I want to recognize it for what it is. A call for help. Some people are addicted to public service and just can't stop. No one knows why. No one knows why that happens, but it happens. And I see a lot of you in the room who have volunteered or volunteering now. And I'm telling you, if you're not careful, this will happen to you. Look back on your life with nothing but a legacy of public service and achievement and great friends and a community that you helped build. Choose wisely. That's all I'm going to say about that. I have a couple of quotes that I'm going to just read between them. The first one, celebrating Gary was written by Nancy Lund in her, in her nomination. Nancy said, "I believe that even the founders themselves would be astonished by how well Gary has carried forward their dreams for Portola Valley. He is well deserving of this recognition." And the other is, is a comment that was made by, about Sue by Anna Eshu last week. She said, "Sue, you really make the word citizen dance." I thought that was a beautiful, beautiful comment. So with that, I will invite, I believe both Sue and Gary wanted to say some brief remarks. So I'm going to invite first Sue to come up to the table and set the microphone.
Am I connected?
Yes.
Am I talking loud enough?
Probably nothing. Pull the mic closer.
Now maybe this is better. Okay. I prepared some words, but I'm overwhelmed by the pleasure of this evening and this whole event. I'm honored. It's more than I can say that I'm honored to be receiving the Founder's Award for lifetime contributions in Portola Valley. First, I'd like to congratulate Gary. A good friend and once a fellow council member. I'd like to acknowledge, even though they're all behind me, my son Doug and his wife Pilar. My son, my son Dan and his wife Harriet. And yes, it would be nice if they would stand. Then, when they were only, and then I have another son who lives in Santa Barbara, and he was not able to make it tonight. So these three sons were like three, four and five when we moved here to Portola Valley. But I also want to acknowledge my friends from the Sequoias who have shortened their dinnertime to be here for me. And I think they should stand too. I am very thank you, thank you. I have lived in this small town for 59 years. We actually moved here in June of 1964, the day the town was celebrating incorporation. It's a very exciting time. And we lived in Alpine Hills. The town hall was in the, in, is where Alpine Tennis and Swim Club, the, it's that little place that they own, it used to be Mangini's. I don't know. That is where the town center was, the town hall was at that point. Times were different then. As I said, I was a newly, it was a newly incorporated town and there were so many town issues to explore. I was a newbie. I wanted to be involved and I had the time to contribute. I joined a committee and each committee I joined led me to serving on another. I got caught up in the excitement of the town. Along the way, there were so many people to encourage my curiosity. I think about Jim Witson. He was a mayor, now deceased. Bob, Bob Brown. Again, a very important person who encouraged me. Patty Williams, Kent Mitchell. And I'm going to include John Silver. I got, as I say, I got caught up and I was interested. They were the ones who encouraged me up the ladder. It felt like I was getting a PhD in Portola Valley town politics. My life was full and rich and I loved what I was learning. And soon I was serving on the council, serving as mayor for two terms. And now my interest today continues still. I live with the Sequoias now. I'm the liaison between the Sequoias and the town. And I realized what a powerful force we are at the Sequoias and how interested we are in the town and the town in the Sequoias. And I choose to continue that. It's important to me to stay up to date and I continue to read the PV Forum faithfully every day. I'd be the first to say that things here in town in the 80s and 90s were different. But what I do know is the love that the people feel for their town has not changed one iota. I believe the respect they have for the town council is solid. That is why I feel so confident that today's struggles will come to a good conclusion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Gary, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, Sue, for those comments and some of the history of our town. I've got to remember to talk into this. First thing I wanted to bring up is, Sue, I've got a question. This. We were both on council for your last two or three years. Can you hear me? Okay, you were on the council with me your last two or three years on the council. And those were my first two or three years. And I wondered, I wonder if you remember the agenda packets that we had in those days. Of course, it was, it was all paper and it was about this thick, which is a lot for the town at that time. And what I, what consisted of, to a great degree, is a number of flyers, announcements, news announcements, and that sort of thing, from just a myriad of, of, volunteer organizations throughout the county. There's just a myriad of them. And I was so impressed with all the things that they accomplished. And I already knew that Portola Valley was really very good, that volunteerism. But it was really a pleasure to see that the county is the same way. And I think it's, I hope it's still that way. Some of the, and they were performing the services for all sorts of things in the county in those days, such as education, health, food, food services, libraries, and all sorts. So the whole range of things. It was truly impressive. It just made me think that volunteerism is really the bedrock of our communities. And so important to keep it going. What I wanted to say also is, I think that's program. All right. How's that, John? That better? Yeah, okay. Perfect. Got it.
Keep cracking my mouth against it. That's too close.
So, so yeah, I want to say what a great program I think this is. Of being able to acknowledge volunteers in this town. There's, you can never do too little of it. And so I'm looking forward to that this program will help encourage volunteerism in our town even more as we move along. And I was thinking about the number of people in this town that are already pretty close to the 20 years requirement as one of the requirements for this award. So I was looking through the committee rosters this morning. And there's so many new faces and new people in there, but there were a number of people that I know and I know something of what they've done. And I came up with probably, there's already two dozen or so volunteers that have joined the 20 plus year club. I think we've got an incredible 20 plus year club going for us. And before my last point, I just want to acknowledge my cheering section. And the major person is my wife Liz. And I'm going, I'm going to ask her to stand up. So the last thing is I want to acknowledge the five of you and also your predecessors, media predecessors, all of you for the immense amount of work that you've put in to this town over particularly for the past three years where we have encountered such an immense number of challenges. That's really good work on your part. And I wanted to say so I want you to all, all of you to know, the five of you and your predecessors, want to acknowledge your, the work that you have done over that period of time. And I want you to know also that I've got all of you right at the top group of my favorite volunteers here in this town. So that's encouragement to keep it up. So I thank you for that. And I thank you very much for this acknowledgement. And thanks for everything. That's it.
We do have, we do have a long agenda tonight, but I will, if people want to make some brief comments of our volunteers, I will, I will allow that right now. So please, please keep it brief. But John starts off.
Listen, thank you so much. It's really wonderful to be here and to see Sue and Gary honored as former colleagues. I'm already okay, if necessary, I'll just shut it off and speak loudly. Are we good now? I think we are. Okay. Sorry, train of thought went out of corner. I already warned the mayor that I've had so little sleep over the last couple of days. I may sound incoherent. He's going to ask me to sit down and I will do so quietly. I promise. I'll try to be succinct. Anyone who knows me knows that's incredibly difficult. But first off, I just want to say what a pleasure it was mostly to serve with Sue and Gary. But you already know, I told, spoke of this at a prior meeting. Sue and I would have always been good friends if we hadn't served together. But I know it's, it was a shock that I can get on people's nerves sometimes. And after 12 years of serving together, her three terms are my last three terms and a four. We were at daggers points. God, we hated each other's guts. It took me 10 years. Well, I thought about apologizing to her and 10 years later, a friend would go by, Craig Brien, wonderful planner, get her signature on documents because we are the same side of most issues. And she had agreed with Craig that it was good for him to be my emissary because she really didn't want to see my ugly face. And I, you know, I thought, anyway, one night Craig wasn't available. I had to go over and I had 10 years to think of apologizing for it. I did. And she was so gracious. She accepted it. I can't thank her enough. I told her her patience and impatience with me helped me a better, be a better planning commissioner for the people of San Mateo County. I learned how to not be, excuse my French, such an asshole. Oh, sorry. I'm not in church, so I can say that. And I was, believe me. I could really be a bear when people didn't agree with me. I was patient with the public, impatient with my colleagues. Terrible combination. And Gary, I recommended him when I was mayor to serve on the ASCC. And then his runner up to be the next in line and then the Planning Commission. And I urged him to run for town council. Thank God he did. 1991. His first two years were my last two, Sue's last two. And thing people don't remember, we went through our first state approved housing element approval process. I think about two and a half years. Memory gets vague. I'm just going to write up the history of this. I will do that. But it was very controversial. There was a lynch mob atmosphere in the MU room, which is out where Wright Field is now, in the old school, which was our town center then. There was a woman who said, "I moved to South Africa, from South Africa to Athens to get away from racial problems. I moved from Athens to the Portola Valley to get away from these Palo Alto. Now you people want to bring it here." That was said. People deny that. I remember racism. I remember when the N word was common when I was a kid in school. A minority of kids, but they were there and it was evil. I remember when Portola Valley voters joined the rest of the state in voting to reintroduce, re-legalize discrimination based on race, religion and national origin in 1964 at the urging of future Governor Ronald Reagan. I'm sorry, I'm starting to tear up. This is horrible history, but we cannot forget it. And I've also got to compliment, well, Gary was elected. He voted for the housing element, which got approved. The controversial thing was ADUs. Give me a break. Stanford wedge, which people claim violated or jam plan uncontroversial. All the slander aimed at our former mayor and council members over the Stanford wedge. Gary helped bring that into fruition. He ran without opposition because the public accepted it ultimately. We had five council members in disparate groups stuck together. And we're good comrades to each other in bringing off the state approved housing. We need one again now, otherwise we're in great jeopardy. I've also got to mention Liz. People don't, okay, I'll wrap it up. Liz was interned during the war against fascism. Liz, I believe her first stop, or if not her first, the very early one out of the camp was Hidden Villa Interracial Summer Camp. The Duvinacs, who were wonderful Quakers, Founder's Peninsula School, gave her sanctuary after the war. She then went on to serve on the board. Gary's a right on man for having the wisdom to marry a wonderful woman. This is Trump's America. This is America where everyone comes together and makes a better country. Okay. Right. I, I have, that'll do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Sorry, I didn't look. Yeah, Dana has her hand up. Dana, go ahead.
Sue, are you sure you're forgiven, John? Anyway, I'm calling to thank both of you. You've been such mentors for me. You've been available when I needed to talk and I love you both and just, I'm so, I'm thrilled that you're being honored. Night.
Thank you, Dana. Any other comments before we, I want to conduct, but does anyone else want to say anything? Just because we've got a Zoom audience, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I'm here to honor Sue because she, I am the oldest living teacher in Portola Valley and I'm still kicking. And I met Sue when she first brought her children to school. And I must, besides all the civil things that she did with the city, she was really big in the school district. And I just want to say that it's time she was honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Key words? Okay. In case I'm going to present these, I'm going to ask you guys to come up one at a time. Okay, that concludes the, that, the awards. There's a little bit of refreshments outside. We're going to take a short, just a five or 10 minute break and we can go outside. There are drinks outside. If you want to, want to stay for the, the next event or the rest of the meeting, grab a drink, come back in. Yeah, let's plan on, we'll plan on being back at 7:40 to start the rest of the agenda. But have some, enjoy some drinks outside. You're welcome to stay outside if you like when we start again. Just don't be too loud. Okay, folks. We're going to get started on the rest of the agenda here. So if we could come in, I think we're going to close the door and get started up again. Okay, our next item is oral communications. This is, this is public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you are here to talk about the housing element, that is 5A, that comes later. So this is again for items that are not actually specifically agendized tonight. Raise hands in schoolhouse. Just raise your hand to speak and then so I'm going to start with the schoolhouse here. John Silver, go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. And before you start, there's a three minute time, three minute limit on these comments. We'll get the timer started.
Can I wait for it to start? I'd like to, it helps.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. I want to talk about civility in public process. Given that I was, had a biblical upbringing, so to speak, I think parables can be helpful. Imagine, I know it's hard, a couple of swimming tennis clubs. Oh gee, we have one in town and one in the area. And let's say most 100 people swim in the pool on average each day. And let's say most 100 people swim in the pool on average each day. And most of them are well behaved, good citizens, but five of them like to pee and someone's even doing number two in the pool. Pretty soon they're gonna feel like the majority because no one else is gonna want to get in that sewer. My big brother, Richard, who is a, I'll call them a militant Mormons, the Mormons call themselves active, it's the version of devout. He hates tobacco and he says to smokers, I won't swim in your toilet, but please don't pee in my pool. That's the way I feel about public process. In this, and by the way, I'm not feeling sorry for myself, but I'm trying to make this brief. In this last election, anonymous caller called me a cunning Jew and hung up before I could tell him that his prejudices all screwed up. I'm the present pastulant of past polygamy and promiscuity. I'm a Mormon. And that's true. Now, thank God, I wasn't Jewish. I had two girlfriends who lived through the Holocaust. They were older. Forty when I was 23 and a little older when I was 28. Anti-Semitism deeply scarred me. Anybody who's been part of an oppressed group knows you take on the oppression of the oppressor. You believe in your own inferiority. That's why the little black girl, ground versus Board of Education, picked the white doll, not the dark doll. These are sad things. Thank God, a Mormon like me was called a Jew, a cunning one. I received anonymous complaints, really funny anonymous letters with someone who didn't divulge what sex, maybe it was a they. But to try to wrap it up before, oh, on the home stretch, sorry, gotta knock the thoughts loose. I'm sorry, train of thought while I'm recording, I think I fell off, so I may have to wrap it up real quick, but I'll try to get this thought back. In any case, this kind of public process poisons democracy. You've got to stand against it. You can't let it rule our town. It is, as Edmund Burke said, when good people can't stand up to the wrong, wrong dominates or worse to that effect. I know I mangled the quote, but God, we're not doing our job and you need to stand up and do it. Especially the three of you whose initials aren't Jeff Alves and Sarah Wernicke. Do your job. Thank you.
Done. Other hands up in the schoolhouse. Man, go ahead. Rita, okay. Okay, actually, is that allowed? I thought it was had to be arranged.
I'll have to review the rules. I believe it, I believe it does have to be arranged and notified in advance by.
Rita, why don't you talk and we'll.
Greetings. Rita Comas Whitney, Westridge Drive. This is a request that town council members cease and desist debating public policy in the private PV forum in violation of the Brown Act. Dear council members and members of the public, I'm speaking to you tonight to express my concern regarding recent postings in which some members of the Portola Valley Town Council have been debating public policy on the PV forum, a non-public communications posting board. This practice is in violation of the Brown Act, which governs open meetings for legislative bodies. The Brown Act ensures that the public has access to meetings where public policy is being discussed and decided upon. A quorum of town council members has access to the communications on this forum and can see the comments of their fellow council members, while many of the town citizens do not have access and are unable to see and participate in this debate. Access and participation in the PV forum is controlled by private citizens and participation is at the discretion of such private citizens. Open and accessible to the public means that members of the public have the ability to access and participate in the social media platform without the approval by a person or entity, including any forum and chatroom. By conducting public debates in a private forum, the council members are not only depriving the public of the right to observe and participate in discussions, but also undermining the spirit of open government. At a minimum, we would expect that you should agree, one, the practice of council members debating and deliberating town business issues on the PV forum represents substandard practice. Two, a notice that appeared solely on PV forum would fail to meet the requirements for a public notice for a PV public meeting. And three, even the mere appearance of impropriety with respect to council procedures is sufficient to undermine public confidence. In light of this situation, I request that the Portola Valley Town Council members immediately cease and desist using PV forum and any other private chatrooms or other non-public platforms for discussing town business and political matters. I also urge the council to review its current practices to ensure full compliance with the Brown Act and to continue to provide training for all members on the importance of transparency and adherence to this legislation. If town council members violate the Brown Act prior to undertaking a vote, the act provides remedies for violations, including invalidating the actions taken and cease and desist letters. Therefore, I encourage the council to consider additional measures to increase transparency and public involvement in the decision-making process on important policy issues. By taking these steps, the Portola Valley Town Council can demonstrate its commitment to upholding the principles of open government and fostering an inclusive democratic process for all residents. I'm confident that the town council will take this matter seriously and work diligently to ensure compliance with the Brown Act moving forward. This is a cease and desist request. Future council member participation on PV forum debates involving town business and political issues may be considered intentional Brown Act violations. Even if you disagree that the debate of town business by council members on PV forum violates the Brown Act, I would encourage you to stop such activity because of the appearance of non-transparency as well as the legal problems it might create. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. I look forward to your prompt response to my letter and any further information regarding the steps the council will take to address these concerns. Please stop posting Portola Valley town items that are to be discussed and voted on on all social media. Let's try and do some open town meetings, get together, so that we can all just communicate together and be together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your volunteerism. My first comment was to thank Cara Silver for her service to the town. I know you care deeply about Portola Valley and losing you is a great loss to our town with the institutional knowledge that you will take with you. And I'm very sorry to see you go. So that was my first comment. My second comment just happens to be coincidentally appropriate, given what we just heard. My request to all of you on the town council is that you will show leadership, united leadership in fighting the plague of misinformation that we are currently undergoing and feeling in this town because we risk our democracy. And I would hope that all of you would unite to fight this plague of misinformation currently and whatever else is coming down the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse my name, it's Dan Cornu from One and Two Brookside. Sorry, and I can't stay too late tonight for the main event. But I plead with you to do what you were elected to do, which is to make a decision. I think that'll cut down a lot of the stuff that we just experienced right now. If the decision is made, there won't be a discussion, there won't be wasted time. There won't be misinformation. Just do it, please. And do it to minimize risk to the whole town, all constituencies, not just your own. Please. Thank you.
Jason. Yeah. Sorry. Every time.
Todd Van Horn. I thought it was, first of all, I'd like to say that the PV forum and the responses from the council members, I find helpful. Their responses to misinformation. And to further Sarah's comments, there's a lot of misinformation out there that is being perpetrated by people with agendas. I think it's critical that our council stand up against it. And the PV forum is a excellent place to clarify it because there aren't enough places where people who are busy, have jobs and have not a lot of time can do a quick summary and see what actually the facts are. I also find it interesting that somebody who's so concerned with proprietary gets up here and talks several minutes past her allotted time. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Next up. No applause, please. Randy, did you have your hand up?
Well, I'd actually plan to say something else before seeing this letter, so I would like to address this letter. But I'll make brief comments towards what I was gonna say before, which is that there are better processes. The processes that have led us to this point, the ad hoc committee process does not work for this town. And I'll explain a little bit more about, about that. And it doesn't, in the housing element section. But I don't know if other speakers are alluding to misinformation coming from me. I certainly reported and disclosed what I think is some very important stuff related to fire safety. There are a section of fire safety in the housing element. And I also called for in the last meeting, the start of what I think are a series of really important governance reforms. I think those can address these PV forum issues. I think, as I mentioned on the PV forum, I think we need a real time system that is managed by the town and the town council, not an independent person. And so that would go a long way. With regard to these, you know, this letter, which says the January 4th letter that I asked to be put in the record and did a PRA for, is, even if it's deemed to be in the public record, it doesn't constitute credible evidence of any fire-related issues. Now, I took great pain and a lot of agony to, to report what I'd heard. And I shouldn't have to do this. Okay. This is, this is shameful that I have had to do this. And this is shame on, on, on the leadership. Because this, the, these interactions and excusing it for, this is how the sausage is made, that we don't want that sausage. We want a transparent process. We want integrity. There's talk of civility. Civility is worthless if it's not founded in integrity. And, and that's, that's what we need here. So what, what I reported was from a senior official in Woodside Fire Department. It was not our farm marshal down there. And he said that, withdraw the objection. We were told to, quote, withdraw, and these quotes are my contemporary taken notes. Withdraw the objection or we'll tank the housing. The town said they would work with us, but they didn't. Asking for what we thought was appropriate would destroy the housing. And we get to the end of the meeting and it, and it doesn't mean anything, referring to the resolution and referring to attorney Cara Silver. Now, and, and the last line is saying that they have a lot of power they haven't exercised yet. This is very concerning for a citizen to hear. And this, this interaction, we need to get to the bottom of this. I've done another PRA. That should, that, there was time for that to happen before this meeting. It hasn't happened. We know why it hasn't. And that, that too is not right. This is not how this town should be run. Okay. I, I was starting to attend meetings in, in San Francisco and, and you expect ugly politics maybe in bigger places. I don't expect that here. And I, and I continue to be disappointed, very disappointed.
Thank you. Other hands up in the room? I'm sorry. Anne Kopsl, go ahead.
Great. Did I unmute myself?
Yes.
Great. This is Anne Kopsl on Minoka Road. And this is a shout out to Cara Silver, our town attorney. I've been, I was on the Ad-Hoc Housing Element Committee. We had many meetings. It was a good process. And Cara attended, I think, every meeting. And then on the planning commission for the last two or three years, we've been dealing with housing at almost every meeting, so Cara attends those. So we've worked together a lot over the past three years. And you know, the housing laws are both complex and many of them are very, very new. So we have really relied on advice from Cara and she's been instrumental in helping to educate me and the other citizens of town. She explains the laws and gives us all the relevant case law. So like as residents, we can make a knowledgeable decision. And there are just many things that I appreciate about Cara. One of the main ones is she explains the risks without, you know, kind of insisting that we take no legal risk. I've worked with attorneys that all they could think about was the legal risk and, you know, that's just not reasonable. We gotta balance the work that needs to be done with the legal risk. And I think she's just great at that. She's a really good communicator. No matter how complex the topics are, I always understood what she's saying. There's just no legal mumbo jumbo from her. I sometimes even would read newspaper articles about housing where you think they'd be trying to explain it clearly and I think, oh, good, we have a planning commission meeting coming up. So I can ask Cara what this really means. So Cara was the best source of info. And she's just great, grace under pressure. As people know, these topics have a lot of controversy on them and emotions run high sometimes, especially late at night. And sometimes certain residents would be railing at us residents on the commission and at the staff. But Cara just stayed so calm, just really answers the questions politely, even if she's already answered it. She's really an example for me and others. And she and our planning director Laura Russell work as an effective team, which has been a wonderful dynamic, I think, for all of us in the town. But I really notice it when I'm on the planning commission. So in summary, it's just been a joy to work with Cara. I really thank the former town council for hiring such high caliber people, one of which is Cara. So thank you, Cara, and you will be sorely, sorely missed in the upcoming months and years.
Thank you, Anne. And I want to echo that and just for those of you who might not be aware, town attorney Silver has tendered a resignation effective May 22nd, and I agree, she will be missed. Are there any other comments on Zoom? I don't see any. Are there any other comments in the, in the schoolhouse here? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, please. Oh, I'm sorry. If you're commenting on the housing element, that comes later. This is for things that are not on, not, not on the agenda. Thank you. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda and members of the public may comment on items on the consent agenda. Members of the council may poll them. So is there any comment on items for A, the several minutes or for B, the warrant list? Okay. I don't see any hands in the schoolhouse. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I just have a question because I had submitted some typo type stuff. Those don't need to be raged and pulled, right?
I want to pull one. I think it's for A, four, it's the interviews from the ASC.
Four A four. Okay. Anything else? Okay. With that, I can take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 4A for the action minutes from the May 1st special meeting. So moved. Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hupdi.
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four A four, so.
Yeah, I just want to correct the record that on commission interviews, item number three, I had voted in favor of Rebecca Flynn and the notes say that I voted against her. I believe the record should reflect that Alfs, Hupdi, Taylor and Wernicke voted yes and member, councilmember Haskell voted no.
Okay. With that correction, I will take a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hupdi.
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, sorry. I need to report out of those session. Sorry, I'm waiting for my mail to reload. Okay. Yesterday, the town council conducted a closed session regarding a threatened lawsuit against the town from Public Safety for PV Now Incorporated. This group alleges that the town's alleged housing, the town's housing element ISMND was deficient on the grounds that the town did not adequately consider fire safety and asserts that the ISMND should be rescinded and the IR should be conducted. Council member Hufdi recused herself on the grounds that it may appear she has a conflict of interest and that the principle of Public Safety for PV Now Incorporated is also an officer of PDNU, a group council members Hufdi was affiliated with at one time. The council voted four zero to approve a tolling agreement with Public Safety for PV Now and to appoint a subcommittee of Judith Haskell and Craig Taylor to negotiate a potential settlement settlement agreement with the principles of Public Safety for PV Now Incorporated. That brings us to item. That brings us to item five, the hearing on the housing element adoption. I will start with tonight's agenda item on the housing element and related documents will be segmented to permit the two conflicted council members to participate. We will conduct this hearing similar to the previous study session. This is how it works. The staff will present on the housing element. The council will ask questions on all items except the properties at forty three seventy Alpine, forty three eighty eight Alpine, and forty three ninety four Alpine. We'll take public comment on all items on for everything. The council questions discussion and action on the three Alpine properties will happen first. The vice mayor and council member Haskell will recuse themselves. Vice Mayor Wernikoff has recused herself from participating in discussion on these items because a family member may become a resident at forty three eighty eight or forty three ninety four Alpine, which potentially triggers the personal finances conflict of interest provision of the political reform act. Council member Haskell lives at six Applewood Lane, which is within five hundred to one thousand feet of the three noted Alpine properties. She's therefore conflicted from participating in discussions concerning these properties under the real property provision of the political reform act. Before the two council members return to the dice, we will take a vote on whether to include these three properties in the inventory at the proposed instances. Once that discussion is completed, Vice Mayor Wernikoff and council member Haskell will return, and the full council will discuss the balance of the housing. We'll begin with the presentation from planning director Laura Russell on the housing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alves, members of the council, members of the public here in the schoolhouse and also on Zoom. We didn't know how it was going to go to have the Founder's Award presentations go before this item. Maybe people were nervous about time. I was a little nervous about time. But I was encouraged and excited and so happy to have so many people in the room and on Zoom supporting two of our longstanding volunteers. And so I just start by saying thank you to them and thank you to the council for reminding us tonight about things that are so important to this community. So if for some reason you haven't met me yet, I don't know how that would be. I'm Laura Russell. My team, as always, is Adrian Smith is our senior planner. She's with here with me tonight. Cara Silver and I, as mentioned, have been working very closely on these matters for about two years now. We also have Curtis Banks from Urban Planning Partners, who's our primary consultant on the housing element and safety element. We are welcoming back from the audience Carla Violet, who has been on maternity leave and is rejoining our team. And then we also have Rick Jarvis, who is special sequoque counsel for us. So that's the team. I'm going to share my screen. I have a fairly brief presentation compared to some of the ones I've given you before. And then we'd be very happy to answer questions. So we are here this evening to consider adoption of the housing element and the associated conforming general plan amendments. As a reminder, most of us know, this process has been going on for quite a while. We have an FAQ on the website, and we also have a table of the relevant meetings. Right now, we're at forty one meetings and about a hundred and forty three hours of public meetings related to this topic. Hopefully, these links have been helpful to people as people have been getting up to speed and coming in and out of the process. So as a reminder, related to the environmental review on March twenty ninth, the last time the council discussed the housing element and associated actions, the council adopted the Housing and Safety Element Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration. We call that the ISMND, as well as the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. That's called the MMRP, and that action was taken by resolution. That resolution does not provide blanket exemptions from SEQA for future housing projects. There's been quite a bit of question around that. New housing projects that are submitted after housing element adoption are subject to project-specific SEQA review. But it is important to note, and we've talked about this in the past, but we know that it's been really a technical process for everyone. Because the town did not submit the housing element by January thirty first, twenty twenty three, and all the associated actions, that's the statutory deadline. Certain projects that are on our site inventory, if they contain a twenty percent below market rate units, must be approved by right. And that means that there would not be SEQA review on those projects. That comes from the state law. It's not because of the way that we did our own environmental review or the conclusions that were reached in our environmental review. More on the March twenty ninth council action. The council adopted the addendum to the MMRP, and that incorporated two topics that came from the planning commission Targ and Brothers colleagues memo. So that memo was incorporated there. And then the council also adopted the remaining topics, other than the finance topic, that the planning commission did not recommend. So the Targ and Brothers colleagues memo has been incorporated by council into the process. The council also committed to pursue seven additional fire prevention measures. And those were proposed by Woodside Fire Protection District. The last two days, right before the meeting on the twenty eighth and twenty ninth, those issues came back up to staff and to the council. And those were included in a stanza in the resolution. And then the council also clarified their intent within that resolution to adopt the safety element by October first of this year, if possible, and include within that safety element measures that are at least as protective as the twenty ten safety element, the one that is currently in effect. The council in that resolution further agreed to adopt the Moritz map and/or a successor successor map as the basis for evaluating fire risk that's associated with specific sites in town. So all of that was included in the March twenty ninth action. Now, turning to the item that's really in front of you tonight is related to adoption of the housing element itself. I just wanted to make sure if people are new to this process that they understand how this discussion and how the materials are organized. So we have the housing element itself, and the one that has been circulated since March of this year is draft number three. We haven't made any changes to that draft itself because we didn't want it to get confusing with lots of different drafts. What we've done is we've captured all of the changes since then in the errata. And that's just a kind of term of art that just says, hey, these are the changes that we're collecting all in one place. And that document is attachment four to the staff report. So what the council's considering tonight is the combination of those two documents. What's in draft number three plus the changes that are included in the errata at attachment four. I'll talk a little bit now about the changes since the March twenty ninth council meeting. So these are in the order that they're presented in the errata and also described in the staff report. There's changes to the setback at the Ladera Church site based on feedback from the council. There's a change to the Optin Housing Diversification Program. That was at the request of a council member to increase the number of planning commission meetings from one to two. There's extended timelines for the Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space site to make sure that there's two full years from adoption of the housing element to accommodate what we've been calling the sunrise provision. And there's a change to the Optin Housing Diversification Program based on council feedback at the last meeting. And the idea is we would reduce the cap of that program. Right now, it's at twelve units. And each time the town issues a building permit for an SB nine unit, that twelve units, that cap would be reduced on a one per one basis for those units that have building permits that are issued. And then there's a section to authorize the planning and building director, my position, to extend the program timelines as may be needed, since the adoption has taken a bit longer than we expected. So we would go back in and adjust the timelines and move some of them forward, typically four months, but then also do a little bit of balancing in the program timelines. Also, it's important to note that we had previously anticipated submitting our housing element by March thirty first. Since we were not able to make that deadline, there's a new section of state law that now applies to us. So the full language is included in the errata, and here are the highlights. It's based on AB twenty three thirty nine, and it requires that there be zones that permit emergency shelters by right to accommodate a certain need. And there's details in the law, so we are required to plan for two hundred square feet per person. And we have to have allow at least one year round shelter. And we did meet with HCD and receive some guidance on this. And the guidance we received is that we need to plan for an emergency shelter for ten people. So two thousand square feet has to be accommodated. So a new program is included in the errata, and it would allow emergency shelters by right. It has to be a by right action within the new multifamily and mixed use zones that are proposed in the housing element, as well as at the town's religious institutions. There's also an update to the definition of emergency shelters, just to clean that up. So when you're looking at the errata, you'll see there's a couple of different places where a couple of lines are added into that section. And then there's a new program. So you can see all of that there. And then we need to make a correction. Thank you to council member Haskell for your close reading. So in the errata on page six, which is packet page ninety one, is a program the council saw at the last meeting related to the gateway land use designation and the dates for the sunrise. So the council had asked us to extend those dates to be two full years. And we just just made a mistake in terms of writing them out here. So we want to clarify that our intention is that we would begin site planning in May of twenty twenty five. Two full years from now, we would begin a site planning process. And then went RFP to developers by January of twenty twenty six, following that site planning process. And so it's changing January twenty twenty five to January twenty twenty six. It's cutting off the text a little bit on on the display, but so it looks a little bit weird, but I hope that that is clear to every everyone.
It looks, sorry to interrupt, but can you, it says twenty twenty five.
So issue RFP to developers by January twenty twenty six, not January twenty twenty five. So I circled the place where I made a mistake, and those are the ones that would change to twenty twenty six. Okay, then also included in the package of materials are the conforming general plan amendments. And as a reminder, all of the elements of the general plan have to be consistent. Consistent with the previous direction of the council, we took a very light touch and only changed the things that were actually conflicting. And so the draft resolution includes those changes. We also wanted to touch on self certification of the housing element. And so what you have in the packet is the same thing you had in front of you at your last meeting on the twenty ninth related to self certification. So as a reminder, the concept here is that the council adopts the resolution, certifying making your findings that the housing element complies with a housing element law. And we do that prior to getting certification by HCD. So we prepared those findings based on a template that's being used regionally. We don't know if this process is going to hold up, if it's tested legally, but this is a best practice that many communities are using right now. And we've included it primarily because it's a potential legal argument if the town receives a builder's remedy application or something of that nature before HCD certifies our housing element. Also, just a reminder about the preliminary post adoption plan. On March twenty second, the town council unanimously supported the post adoption plan that was presented by council members Haskell and Taylor. Topics two and three of that plan were incorporated into the MMRP as additional policy member measures that was included as an addendum. And then the remaining topics, we anticipate being further developed by the council members and returned to council for public comment and additional consideration. And in regards to integration of the Woodside Fire Protection District recommendations, our staff, our attorney has been in communication with their attorney leading up to the last meeting and since then. And the discussion has really been, I think, the simplest way to think about it is that the recommendations fall into several buckets. There are some that are really within the purview of the fire district, and they will need to lead. There's quite a few of those. There are some that are already implemented. Example would be our home hardening ordinance, chapter seven A. Some of them are actively in process, either by the fire district or by the town right now. And there's also items that belong in the safety element draft, or maybe potentially other policy documents that the town and the fire district may work on together. We understand that the council has made a strong commitment to implement the fire district recommendations. And you adopted that resolution language that was agreed upon by the town attorney and the fire district's attorney when you adopted that resolution on March twenty ninth. You also, again, clarified that you want to adopt the safety element by October first, if possible, that that same concept I was talking about before, having it be at least as protective. And you also said that you would plan to adopt the Moritz map or a successor map. As a reminder, we didn't talk about it much at the last meeting, but in case people wish to now, there's a preliminary high level cost estimate of implementation that's been included as an attachment for the last this meeting and the one before. This really is a significant undertaking to implement a housing element like this. And as a reminder, the post adoption plan will require additional staff and or consultant resources. And that'll need to be discussed at an upcoming council meeting. I wanted to go through briefly a couple of updates that are included in your staff report. I'm going to keep this a little bit light. We'd be happy to take any questions if you have any. We received questions about SB nine units and their inclusion. HCD has been very strict about including SB nine units. Our assessment is that we do not, as of now, have a proven track record of units to count and project forward. That's based on building permits that have been issued. And right now, our building permits issued are zero. They also gave some ideas about how to do analysis of individual sites. But when most cities contemplated this, they figured it was likely impossible. And at the very least, very time consuming and costly to do that methodology. To our knowledge, no other San Mateo County jurisdiction. To our knowledge, no other San Mateo County jurisdiction has successfully included these units in their inventory. And our advice was to use those SB nine units to help offset the opt-in program as the council suggested at the last meeting. In terms of other surrounding communities, Redwood City is the only jurisdiction we know of that's been certified so far. Menlo Park is close. The others are at varying stages in our county and surrounding area. And we've talked about this very much, but we always do feel obligated. And in case people are new to the process to talk about the consequences of not adopting a housing element. There are a lot of incentives and penalties that come into play, including notably by right approvals. Density requirements, civil lawsuits, penalties, builders remedy. So there's a lot of things that have been on the mind of staff, the council and the public as we've been moving through this. In terms of public comment, we received 43 public comments prior to the staff report publication. Notably, one letter was the Silicon Valley Law Group representing the public safety for PV Now Incorporated. That was mentioned in relationship to the closed session. And the letter requests that the town immediately rescind the ISM and D. Or enter into confidential settlement discussions. So that letter is just included. So all members of the public and the council all have access to that information at the same time. There have been many more additional public comments that were transmitted to the council this afternoon directly. They were also posted on the town's website. We also wanted to note latest materials that have been distributed. The town attorney in consultation with our outside counsel. Has included for your consideration, attachment one exhibit D. So this is another exhibit to the resolution. And that's, that's provided for your consideration. That includes supplemental findings regarding fire safety issues. That was sent to council this afternoon. It was posted on the website under the calendar feature. With the agenda packet and the public comments. And there's also print copies available on the dais and in the back of the room in the schoolhouse. So in terms of next steps, if the council wishes to approve the housing element this evening. Then staff will incorporate all of the changes from the errata as well as anything else that's directed by council this evening. We would correct the typos, which are outside of the purview of this discussion typically. And then we would submit the updated housing element to HCD. It would be, if you approve it, adopted officially by the town and we'd be making those self certification findings. So we would consider the housing element adopted by the town at this time. Then HCD has another 60 day review period. And they will either certify the housing element or issue another comment letter. And so at that point, then the town would need to make decisions about how to move forward if any final changes are necessary. So that concludes my presentation. We'd be very happy to take your questions. Segmenting as described by the mayor related to those topics. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Cara, I don't have my script, so just remind me if I get it. So first up is just, just general question from the council.
That's, that's correct. Let's see, we could do the Alpine questions first.
Wait, I'm sorry. I thought we do everything but the Alpine sites. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The Alpine, the Alpine questions and discussion go first.
And then, then they recuse them. So, oh no, then we take public comment and then.
Yes.
Okay, and then we come back for the script.
I apologize. Yeah, let's hold the Alpine questions.
Questions from the council or?
I'm a little confused on the process and I'm good with whatever you say, but I thought, I thought the. Recused members of council needed to only. Vote on the, after the Alpine word. So how does it work for the question?
Right. So let's do all questions now, except let's hold the Alpine questions.
And then public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So questions from the council right now on anything other than those, the three Alpine properties. Mary, do you want to go first? Mary, pull the, pull the mic closer to you.
I have a question about the sunrise provision and whether that's been legally tested by any other communities, such a thing.
No, I've never heard of this before.
What are the, okay. The correlate to that is what are the chances it will be accepted?
HCD did not provide a comment on the previous timing. And so we have extended the timing. And so if they provide a comment, I think it would be related to the timing of the development of Ford. Park and open space. So that is the, I think, the way that it would come to us, that they would say there's not enough time. After the sunrise has passed for that site to be developed.
Okay, so you basically, did I hear you right? It, it passed, it's past muster.
The, the old timing had passed muster. We just don't know whether the new timing will.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Craig.
Yeah, I have a couple. The SB nine exchange for opt-in. I'm a little confused and maybe conceptually, maybe we don't need to decide this tonight or. Explain it in more detail. But SB nine has potentially four units on a lot. The opt-in does. So is it four for four or one parcel for one parcel? I'm trying to figure that out if there's a framework to help.
It would be by unit. That's how we understood the direction from council last time. So we thought it through a little bit. And an example would be if someone came in with a single family home in ADU and an SB nine unit. Then they have one SB nine unit and then the cap of 12 would be reduced to 11. Then maybe someone came in and had an SB nine project with four. Then we would reduce by four from 11 and go down like that. That's the idea.
Thank you. On page 86. Does it make sense when we're talking about the Ladera Church setback? To talk about it may be reduced to zero feet. I don't know, with consent of both owners as opposed to Ladera Church to make it flexible in case that property were ever sold. So that it all kind of hangs together.
Yeah, I think that would be a positive change.
Okay. Page 89. Oh. I'm not sure if this is a Alpine question or not. And I, if it is, then I, I don't need to address it. But it's just the overlay, the supportive housing overlay. And just determining the number of residential units. There's in the errata, page 89. I'm confused what's going on there.
That is an Alpine.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on from there. And then Laura, my last question is, when you say we're authorizing you to extend timelines. Some people talk about moving timelines forward, meaning shortening them. So can you just explain what we're doing if you can adjust the timelines?
Yeah. We had initially, of course, aspired to adopt the housing element in January. And we had written the timelines based on the assumptions when we drafted the housing element originally. When we released draft number three, we didn't go in there with a fine tooth comb and adjust all of the timelines and make reasonable changes. So our proposal is to authorize my position to move the timelines further into the future. Not shorten them, but for us, but give us more time to implement them. Based on some of the time that has passed and the new things that have come up along the way.
Thank you.
My question has to do with the emergency shelters program. What is this? Cause to me, it kind of feels like a potential new site. Like, how is that accommodated? Or, or is that, where, is it defined through the zoning process? If you could just elaborate on that, because this is brand new.
It's included in a program. So we would be adding new language. Right now we have kind of standard language for program eight dash three. That was kind of a typical way to deal with the state law in the past. But now since we have to update it for the new law, we're proposing amendments to program eight dash three. And the way that we would implement it is to allow shelters. By right in our new multifamily zoning district and in our new mixed use zoning district. And then also allow shelters at religious institutions. So that is really the change. And then it's implemented through the zoning code amendments, but based on the program language and the housing element.
Okay, but, okay. So those are essentially, we're not.
But it's.
You elaborate on the locations.
I'm trying to think if I can do that without talking about the sites individually. But I think the thing to remember is that as part of the housing element adoption. The town is committing and creating new, two new zoning districts. One that allows multifamily that has specific places where that's being applied. And one that has mixed use and there's one site where that's being applied. And so this law then means that we allow emergency shelters by right in those zones. If those zones were ever expanded in the future, then it would also apply to those sites. But for now, we have a specific location where those sites are located.
But who would?
Is that helpful?
Well, I guess who would? See, obviously, as with everything else, our obligation is the zoning. Because it's, I guess I'm getting tripped off because it's an emergency shelter, which you would assume would be paid for by the town? I don't know, like, like a public entity versus a private property owner.
So it would likely be provided by the, the common locations are religious institutions, service institutions. Nonprofit organizations, some affordable housing providers. So that's what we would see kind of in larger cities. And the change to this law, the intention of it is that cities in the past. Have only zoned for housing shelters in commercial or industrial zoning districts. And they're saying we have to extend that and also allow emergency shelters in some residential districts. So in this community, what makes sense then is multifamily and mixed use zoning as well as the religious institutions. Thank you.
Mary, do you want?
Or whether I could mention that, for example, Christ Church has such a facility that could be self-heeled into such a thing? In other words, the use it now as an emergency home, et cetera. Would that qualify for that?
Yes, it could qualify in terms of formalizing it. And so this is about the state and then HCD guidance to say, to create some stronger parameters. So that's why they came up with the 200 square feet per people, per person and the capacity to shelter 10 individuals. But it can be part of existing buildings. It could be new buildings. It could be a range of things.
Is that, any more questions? I just wanted, so would Christ Church be zoned for that?
Under this program, it would be allowed.
Because it's a religious institution.
Yes.
Even though the zoning, the underlying zoning doesn't allow for it, but it's, it's the fact it's a religious institution.
Correct.
It's been changed. Has nothing changed in this to be allowed for multi-unit housing?
Not Christ Church, no.
It's not multi-user, but the, the. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment. Okay, we are now taking public comment on the full housing element. You can raise your hand if you're here. You can raise your hand on Zoom. I'm going to start. I have two speaker cards. The first one I got was from Nan Shostak. Go ahead. Don't worry if you didn't give, fill out a speaker card, you can still talk.
Nan Shostak, and speaking for myself, not as a member of the committee. Council members, thank you very much for all the time and service that you've given to the town. I know this is a really trying time for you and you're all doing your very best under very difficult circumstances. My comment is actually on the timing of implementing Fire Marshal Buller's recommendations. That you're calling seven additional fire prevention measures. Recommendations for improved fire safety. I'm concerned that. Consideration of a resident's basic safety has been buried under a landslide of public comments on the housing element. The trade-off you're facing is for short-term risk. By submitting the housing element too late, possibly facing the builder's remedy, although there's self certification, which may work. Versus longer-term risk by delaying stronger fire safety rules until after. Projects have been approved under the current fire rules. And really hope self certification works for you. Whatever you decide for the housing element tonight. Fire Marshal Buller's recommendations really need to be incorporated into the municipal code. Municipal code as soon as possible. It's not enough. That the new fire safety rules be included in the safety line. It's good, it's not enough. And then sometime later implemented in the code. Safety element doesn't ensure fire safety. It just makes suggestions. The municipal code provides the enforcement. So tonight, please set a motion, a process to expedite the incorporation of Marshal Buller's recommendations. Directly into the municipal code, regardless of the safety element, do the safety element at the same time, if you like, but just get it done in the code. Safe building under the housing element really depends on this. The new rules are necessary and integral to the physical safety of our growing town. I've had experience with the safety element provision process and. I strongly suspect that the October 1st. Date for finishing the safety element is a little bit aspirational. So I think it's going to be longer than that. And I hate to see the buildings go in. Hate to see buildings go in that don't meet the new fire safety rules. So the new fire safety rules need to be implemented as soon as possible, basically now. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nan. I was asked to tell people on Zoom. There are 62 people currently watching on Zoom. I have one more speaker card from John Silver. So John, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm exhausted, as I said before, so I hope I can remain sentient while I get up to finish my comments. I'll try. First off, I want to comment on something that was said earlier. I believe under oral communications. Why is it, why is it? When people don't like what other people are saying, they try to muzzle them. That happens so often these days. I don't like it. I don't think there's any difference between the PV forum and a private newspaper. My God, when have private newspapers not been allowed to publish in our country?
John, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do want to focus you on the housing element.
I, okay, this is, this is critical. I'm sorry, it is. When someone challenges our right to free speech, it cannot be allowed to sit idly by and be ignored. I will not. I will not do that, I cannot do that. No, but to try to wrap this up before I do lose my train of thought, which I'm at great risk of doing, given how exhausted I am. We need. I'm sorry. We need to keep it together to be decent to each other. Anyway, I'm going to go on to other things because I'm too tired to keep track of what I'm saying. Links, links to parking. That note was meant to remind myself that I heard yesterday on two different radio programs, Fresh Air and on KQED Forum, about this fellow has written the book, Understanding the World Through Parking. He said, if I remember it correctly, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, that there's enough extra parking in the South Sico Bay area to wrap around our world twice, twice over. Parking isn't needed. We could have narrower roads, less traffic, if we just had less parking. It's effing crazy. In addition, in Japan, there is a program where people have hundred-square-foot apartments in Tokyo. I cannot imagine that. I have a tiny ADU next to my house, which is under 300 square feet, and it's beautiful. It provides good housing for people that need it. Hobbit holes would be a possibility. Hobbit holes, I'm not joking. The fire department wouldn't like it, not safe, but pretty goddamn, excuse me, pretty good. Last, bear with me. I'll try to regain my thoughts. Well, I'm about to give it up because I am exhausted. You'll all be relieved at that. Anyway, thank you so much. Keep it together. Oh, one thing I must, yeah. I apologize. Give me just a moment to try to put this in a nutshell. If we were to annex Ladera, Jasper Ridge, and okay, if we were to annex an additional land, we could. I apologize.
Catherine?
It's my first meeting, so it's pretty exciting for me. And I had not posted on PV Forum about the housing initiative until two weeks ago. So I've come out of the shadows because I think this is really, really important, and it's time to act. Today, I've sent you all, just a moment before 1:00 PM, a letter. It's very simple, and it's only 16 words long. It says, Dear Town Council, please approve and submit the housing plan. We support affordable housing. Thank you. What's remarkable in the letter is that 194 community members signed that letter. And they cared so deeply that most of them included bullets about their community involvement and how long the business is. Since 1 o'clock today, it has grown to over 220 people. And it's still open. So for those of you that also feel like we have the right plan, and the time is now, and you support it, and you believe we should have affordable housing, please sign this letter. I also want to call attention because I don't know Town Council, your lives, and how many people you know in town. Because we all live in our little worlds, myself included. And that's actually one of the fun things about the letter. The letter started on Sunday, it was suggested by someone other than me. And I said, okay, I'll throw up a Google Doc, let's see what happens. And since then, I've done nothing. It snowballed, and it went viral. Pretty cool, I have to say. And I want you to look at those people because they are the future suprains. These are some of the most impressive leaders that we have, working and volunteering in this town. I've got 56 seconds, let's go. We've got Portola Valley Town Committee members. We have Portola Valley School District School Board trustees. We have Portola Valley School District Parcel Act Bond and Bond Major Leaders. We have Schools Foundation Officers and Board Members. Woodside High School Foundation Officers and Board Members. Sequoia's residents, many sit on their Residents Association Board Association. We have Alpine Hills Officers Board Members members, local church leaders and members, town business owners, and we have our own high school students telling you what to do. I also want to say, we have many other people that didn't attach their attributes and their volunteer work, but also care deeply. So why are you hearing from us now? I don't know. We're out of town time, but I know we have a good plan. People needs, need homes, and we should follow the law. Thank you very much.
Sir.
I'm Sarah Simbeck. I've also never been here before, and I'm happy to be here. I sent you guys a letter, a council letter in support of approving the housing element, but I wanted to reiterate a couple of points. First, I see approving the housing element not as a necessary evil, but as a wonderful opportunity for our Town Council to show leadership. We can demonstrate what a local government, in conjunction with hard-working staff and engaged citizens, can achieve when faced with a daunting task. We can show other towns how to thread the needle and make the tough decisions and trade-offs that are essential to good governance. And most importantly, we can be an example of an affluent town that stood up for inclusivity and affordable housing, and did so in a way that honors the beautiful natural environment that brought most of us here in the first place. Second, I think it's very important to point out that there's a price to pay for the constant delays and rehashing that has been taking place regarding this issue. We're seeing an alarming increase in the turnover of our town staff, and I don't think it's a coincidence. We've had four staff members resign over the last few months, and I assume it's because they no longer want to work for a town that can't make decisions and ask them to redo what was already done well the first time around. I can only imagine the time and money that it takes to replace them, not to mention the loss of institutional knowledge and inefficiencies that this will create for the whole community. Frankly, I was very taken aback to see that recently a council member who voted against the housing element in March had the audacity to blame staff for delays in moving the issue forward. That's not only ludicrous, it's wrong. It's time to act and not pass the buck. Third, I think we need to all consider the budgetary implications of this. The debates and delays cost money. We've already spent $500,000 on the development of the housing element, and now we have new costs related to finding and hiring new staff, a post-approval process, and fighting potential lawsuits. That's a very big bill for a small town, and I highly doubt taxpayers really want to pay for that. Finally, and most importantly, what really brings me here is that I really feel the contentious housing debate has brought to the forefront a bigger issue that needs to be addressed. Namely, how is this council going to stand up to the misinformation, the lawsuits, the threats of the vocal minority, so that we can have a fair, efficient, and representative town government? Clearly, the vocal minority has dominated Portola Valley politics for a while now, and this has led, in my opinion, to an unbalanced and unhealthy situation. The good news from my perspective is that the housing element issue has awakened the silent majority, and you now have our attention. The letter was submitted, the letter just referred to that was submitted to the council today with 200 signatures from Portola Valley residents, supports the housing element and affordable housing in general, and it's certainly evidence of that fact. So I would like to finish by asking the council to pay attention to the bigger picture here. Our town can and should be a shining example of an ethical, fair, and pragmatic local government who strives to represent the interests of the broad community. This will require courage, leadership, and standing up to bullies and threats. But in the end, this is what will serve our town best and what we elected you to do. Thank you very much for your service.
See two hands up on Zoom, I'll call on them now, Rita Combs Whitney, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I'd like to talk about the January 4th letters from Woodside Fire Protection District and the March 29th Woodside Fire Protection District letters. No matter what is said to minimize the January 4th letter from Woodside Fire Protection District, the information on that letter is important information concerning our safety. And on March 29th, the town treated that letter, the 29th letter, as, as if it was all new information, although it is unclear who viewed the January 4th document from the town. Our personal safety is important, and the safety of the new residents and building codes is important. We look forward to welcoming our new residents and need to get the suggestions into the town's municipal code as soon as possible. It should not wait until the final proposed safety element date in maybe October 2023. We need to keep our current 4,300-plus residents safe and all the future residents that we are bringing into our lovely town safe. I'm glad that the conversations are going strong and moving forward. I'd just like to see it done sooner. I know we're shorthanded, but we seem to be getting to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next hand on Zoom is Peter Lipman, Peter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for taking my call. I'd like to address a detail, and at the same time, I would like to thank the staff and the council for their hard work. And I have confidence that a good outcome will arise from this. But I request that you give some consideration to trying to be as transparent and honest about what is being proposed for Dorothy Ford Park. The nomenclature for Dorothy Ford Park, that's been used in documents for the last year, has been highly variable, talking about vacant portions of Ford Field and things like that. I'm delighted to see the word park finally appearing in the erratum correction made at the time of the March meeting. But I still think it's somewhat misleading to talk about Dorothy Ford Park and open space. Dorothy Ford Park is the whole package. There's a Little League field and some open space as part of it. The present nomenclature sort of implies, at least potentially to many people, that that is a separate parcel from the park. It isn't, it's all the park. And it potentially obscures the effect of the planned development for that area that would obliterate Dorothy Ford Park as it existed and has been enjoyed for the past 50 years. So why not just use the wording Dorothy Ford Park? Or if there's need to be more specific, it's the open space portion of Dorothy Ford Park that is being proposed for a housing site. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Martin has his hand up on Zoom, go ahead, Martin.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I don't think I could state it any more eloquently than Mr. Peter Lipman just did. It's the whole package. It's the open space. It's defined the town for 50 years. I've said before, perhaps rashly, that it's quite ludicrous to propose building anything there from a geotechnical standpoint even. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, I'll come back to the room here, Karen, go ahead.
First, I want to start with something fun. Trivia night, Saturday, May 13. I want to see the Town Council team, and I want to see all of you there, let's have some fun with that. And I have a question for Laura about the SB 9 units. I know there's a couple apps that have been received, and I'm just interested in what the likelihood is that they would get approved and how many units that would be. And now on to a more serious note. I, like most residents, would like to see our town adopt the housing element sooner than later. But I am not in favor of eliminating the jobs of 30 employees currently at the Glen Oaks Equestrian Center, many of them at lower wages, so that market-rate housing will be built for a select group. Glen Oaks currently serves hundreds of community members and has been in business 25 years. Am I the only one who visualizes this headline? Wealthy enclave opts for multimillion-dollar homes over the livelihood of agricultural workers. Well, let's hope that doesn't go to press. Given the Glen Oaks site is planned for just 16 market-rate units, I hope the Town Council tonight can creatively find alternative sites for those units through the town-owned land near the soccer field, SB 9 units under application, and a few more ADUs, JADUs. I believe we have strong arguments for HCD to show we can produce those units in that manner. Let's go for it. And I had submitted a little more detail in another letter. The decisions that you make tonight will weigh greatly on Portola Valley's future. I liken it to raising children. There are many ups and downs, challenging problems to tackle, and difficult decisions to be made. But we never give up on our kids, and it is a continuous work in creating the best possible outcome that we can for them. We learn with them, we grow with them, and there are times when we adapt as the situation changes. It's okay to change our minds after we learn of new information or we hear alternative viewpoints. Changing one's mind can show a willingness to listen, to be flexible, and to put a greater good before our own. As stewards of Portola Valley, let's steer ourselves to the best that we can be for today and our many tomorrows. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
How could you know everyone?
Well, we.
I do, but I switched the name, so I know everyone, but I call them something else.
My name's Jim Stoneberg, this is my first time in front of y'all. But my friend Sarah Dorr, he's been kind of keeping me up to date on what's been going on. And I felt like I wanted to just talk about something a little more schmaltzy than all the technical stuff that's been going on so far. And I guess what I want to say is, I'm, I'm in full support of the town's mission to maintain the character of a small rural community. I also approve of the 1970s-style governance and community referenced in a few of the council members' webpages. I was a kid here in the 70s, and I joined the first grade class at Woodside Elementary in 1975. Woodside and Portola Valley were a playground for us, and it really felt like a. We actually chose it for that reason. My family were ranchers and farmers, and we needed to move, and this is a place where we got horses. It was also a place where people wore cowboy boots. At the time, Woodside and Portola Valley were very rural, and they were also very economically diverse. My classmates' parents included the local plumber, the butcher Roberts, Stanford professor, domestic worker at the flyshacker, state two-building contractors, real estate agent, a doctor, two bankers, and others. The principal lived across the street from the school. The plumber, Matt Bain, saved our house during a flood, and I'm still friends with the Electors and Son. The point of all this is that our community was made up of the people who made the town function. Historically, that's what rural towns are, they're self-sufficient, the people that make it happen. And so for that reason, I agree oh hardly with Councilmember Haskell, who's focusing on supporting local employees and enabling families to stay, finding options for elder out there, that's for a rich, layered community. And we need housing for that. I also agree with Mary Huffey in that we need to recognize the town's watershed moment in facing our need for a mixed-price housing stock. From my perspective, the inclusion of people with varied economic backgrounds makes it function more like a small rural community. Passing the housing element allows us to control development instead of leaving it to others. No one on either side of this argument is looking to develop, nobody wants it, but sometimes leadership takes making hard choices. By passing the housing element, we give ourselves a stronger position to work from. And I guess. And I guess at the same time, I mean, it also gives us a chance to kind of reflect on this whole image of what it's a rural community. Because a lot of the the arguments I'm seeing aren't talking about a community, they're talking about a meat. That's mine.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? I see Greg.
A housekeeping request because this will go a lot better if we have a slide that we can review, which is the site inventory for the housing element. Is that okay with Jeff?
If Laura can pull it up, sure.
It's just gonna take a minute.
Do you want me to sit down and come back?
Sure, yeah. Alex, did you want to go?
Good evening. So my name is Alex Von Felb. My address is 5 Creek Park Drive. I've been a resident for since 2001, so about 22 years, and I've been donated some time for town volunteering. I was on the Conservation Committee, the ASCC Commission, and the Planning Commission. So I'm here tonight to ask and hope that the town council approves a housing element tonight. I agree with many of the other things that people who are supporting the housing element have said, specifically the points that resident Sarah Simbeck pointed out, I think are a great summary of how I feel as well. But tonight I'd like to focus my comments on an area that I have personal experience. So I manage a local nonprofit organization that organizes volunteers to restore habitat on public lands throughout San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties. Work on a preserve just here in town called the Hawthorns Preserve that's owned by a mid-pen. And we removed flammable French broom and have removed all the yellow star thistle and brought back the lupin on the site. So in order to safely organize thousands of volunteers, make sure they pull the correct plants and not native plants, we need paid staff. These staff are typically young environmental professionals that have devoted their careers to serving the community at the expense of a high salary. Despite enjoying the work and feeling as though they are making an impact, after a couple of years, most decided they cannot stay in the Bay Area due to the cost of living and lack of housing. So they move away typically to other states. This pattern repeats itself not only for our organization, but for nonprofits throughout the region that are providing a range of public services. Losing the sorts of people that want to do this work hurts our community. If your student needs community service hours, you need these people. If you'd like a local land agency to remove flammable material from their land, you're relying on these people. If you'd like more native plants, cleaner creeks and baylands, more restored watersheds, you need these people. Being part of a statewide solution that increases housing everywhere should help alleviate this housing shortage and keep us from losing these people. So as an environmental professional, I believe that affordable housing is good for the community, good for the environment, and I encourage you all to pass it tonight. Thank you for your time. Oh, and a quick P.S., thank you very much, Cara, for your service to the town. You've been a great asset and I'm sorry to see you go, but good luck to you.
Thank you, Alex. Laura, are you ready with that slide?
Yeah.
Craig, you can use your slide now.
I think this is what we want. This one?
Page 132. Anyway, at least we'll be able to. So Greg Franklin, thanks for taking my comments tonight. Someone left their phone up here. Look, I'm not against affordable housing, but I've always wanted to see it done in an intelligent, thoughtful way within a reason and consistent with the town values and physical infrastructure and, most importantly, increasing wildfire vulnerability. For anyone to suggest anything to the contrary is actually insulting and we had lots of unfortunate exchanges over this issue. My biggest concern is the unintended consequences of rezoning private property in Portola Valley, 20 housing units per acre or more. And the reason for that is the application of state housing laws, which override local control and more particularly the the bonus density law, which, as I understand it, would allow a 20-unit-per-acre site to be rezoned 36 units per acre if it were developed by an affordable housing developer who committed to low and very low-income category housing. And so I'm sort of zeroed in on 4390 Alpine, 4394 Alpine Road, because that's the only lot in the Housing Element Plan, private lot, not institutional private lot, that's zoned 20 units per acre. It's a 1.18 acre site, so if you just do the math, 36 units per acre times 1.18 is about 42 units. So 42 units are possible if you rezone that RM20. My message tonight is if you approve a housing element, please do not exceed an upper limit of 19 housing units per acre for that site. And if you do the math, 1.18 times 19 units per acre equals 22.4, which is 1.4 in excess of what you're going to submit to the state, which is 21 units for that site. So I think it's just a matter of math. And if you rezone it, as I understand it, if you rezone it 20, the current owner or an affordable housing developer could put 43 units on that site. Okay, 42 units on that site. So in aggregate, if you include that lot and the contiguous lots down Alpine, which of course is Willow Commons, which is basically consists of three two-story fourplexes, which by the drawings are five and 15 feet apart and have cedar wood siding. And then there alongside the country offices, 4370.
Greg, you're at time.
Okay, so basically, I'm very disappointed that my letter to the town council and was uploaded on the site, which details all this analysis, was not published at all in any material circulated. But my message is if you submit a town housing element, please do not exceed 19 units per acre on that site. It's not necessary to achieve the 21 units and you still are able to meet your commitment to 253 units plus a 15% buffer. Thank you.
Other speakers here. Kristi.
Mary Jack is going to give me three minutes of her time, so I'm hoping to have six minutes. Thank you. Let's see. Thank you for your time and energy towards our housing element. I know this takes a lot of energy for all of you. I'm all for affordable housing coming to the town. It's been long overdue. It's where the affordable housing is placed that I care about. Did the town invite you, the residents, to a tour to all the sites like Menlo Park did? The answer is no. I'm concerned about preserving three things. Open space, number one, open space, repairing and buffer zones next to the streams and wildlife corridors. Number two, recreation fields and parking. Number three, Alpine scenic corridor, and I'm not in favor of a gateway. We have a scenic corridor and that wording matches our general plan. I'm in favor of three things, providing safe building standards and proper selection of parcels to build on. Proper protection, preparation, evacuation planning for natural disasters such as earthquakes, wildlife, wildfires, massive water increases in our streams, which caused instability to our banks and trees this year. A eucalyptus tree fell close to a water-saturated stream, killing Mr. Diaz on Alpine Road this year as he drove down out of town in his work van. I stopped on Easter night to pay my respects, seeing the whole family standing there crying. Let's not have that happen to anybody else in this town. We must work with San Mateo County and provide landowners and private landowners to ensure that this does not happen anywhere else in our town. Stream and tree assessments must be written into the safety element and the housing element of Portola Valley and in San Mateo County's housing element, which we all can read right now and it's due by June 9. We have to do this, everyone. Go find that housing element for San Mateo County because that's at the end of Alpine Road. That's our exit. I'm just off of Alpine Road. My son played Little League on the field. We called it the Field of Dreams. When we moved in, it was a big draw for us. I have a poster showing Dorothy Ford Park. Those of you in the audience and also those of you in town council have a copy of this. This is Dorothy Ford Park as we see it now. Okay? This could be a rendering of Dorothy Ford Park as we may see it in the future. It's only a rendering. It's not exact, but it's a good idea what might happen. Here it is. This is what we're voting on tonight. This is our open space donated by Tom Ford and many others in the town. So this is on our open space map right now. This is the plaque that remains at Dorothy Ford Park. It's on a rock. If you haven't been there, please go to the trees and stand under them. It's like being under an umbrella. It's beautiful and I know we can develop this to be a park for our residents and the residents of San Mateo County. This is the field, the field which my son played softball in. This field and the field next to it is on the housing element to be 20 units an acre. Is this what we want for our town? This brings back a lot of memories. Tom Ford placed that plaque under two 200-year-old trees that remain on there in remembrance of his mother. Tom Ford and others in the town made donations to purchase the open space. It's the first open space donated to Portola Valley. This open space park is currently on our maps and Portola Road has a children's park, tennis and fields, but Alpine Corridor does not have a children's park. I found myself going to Ladera Recreation Park when my family was young for a variety of parks to bring my children to. So why do we need to upzone the Little League field to 20 units an acre? 600 children use that park on an annual basis. We're about ready to invite 1,000 more people to the town. Many of the children will need to have a place to go on the Alpine Corridor. As you can see in your packets, I also did a possible
You've used six minutes or you're done.
Okay, so I encourage you all to look at the other pictures, but I do want to say something about the sunset.
Kristi, no, you're done. Six minutes, please stop. You've had six minutes plus.
I'm hoping we can make a committee right away for the sunset and I think this housing element should have SB 9 units in it, as many other towns have SB 9 units in their housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Melon Bernaz and I just would like to reiterate the possibility of you correcting the zoning on 4394 to the 19 units an acre, like Greg says, to protect us against the builder's remedy. We still get exactly, you know, at least the 21 units that you're requesting for that site, but it would protect us more if you would make it 19 units an acre rather than 20 units an acre. Thanks.
Jeff Kraus.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jeff Kraus and I just wanted to use this right here because the way I understand it is if we don't pass the housing element, the builder's remedy could actually lead to this scare tactic happening in our town. And so I call on the town council to please pass the housing element. I would also like to say that having a diverse community is what Portola Valley is about and we do not have economic diversity in our community and it would be a welcome addition to our town. I share Mr. Stoneberg comments that this is an elite nonprofit and what we want to build is a community. In addition to that, I would really encourage our community members to stop with spurious lawsuits and claims about violation of the Brown Act that are distracting our town from doing their very important work. This is the second time that the Brown Act has been brought up as a lawsuit and it's a waste of time. Let's pass the housing element and build Portola Valley in the vision that all of you have worked so hard to create. Thank you for your support.
I think the gentleman made a valid point regarding Ford Field because the town has more control over development there. But really, and I'm not against passing a housing element, I think we need to do that very quickly. But I want to caution everybody here. This is a little bit like pass it and then we'll see what's in it. I do want to draw some attention to the picture that Kristi Corley gave us regarding 4394 Alpine Road. I think you should all look at that because that is a piece of private property. Some of us know why 4394 Alpine Road is slated to be zoned for 20 units per acre. That's the magic number that allows Portola Valley to please HCD with an automatic low-income housing designation for the property. Based on the size of the parcel, the town is pretty well resigned to the fact that low-income housing is unlikely to be built by anyone but the current nonprofit owner. And they have stated no intention of taking up all the units allowed by the designation. But the town gets street cred from HCD and the owner finds great value in an entitlement that can be sold should they wish to. All of us should be very clear about the maximum value of this entitlement. 20 units per acre is also the threshold at which an owner building low-income housing can apply to the state for an 80% density bonus. This could place up to 40 units on this property as slightly more than an acre. The housing element does not require anywhere near 40 units from this property, but like the builder's remedy that we're all talking about, the zoning replaces town governance with state control. I'll say it again. It replaces town governance with state control. So why should we care? That should be obvious, but we can toss a dice and hope that all, all works out well. But down zoning almost never happens. This property will forever be richly entitled, likely much longer than the intended use may exist. When does the town reach the tipping point for what is appropriate in building out Portola Valley? We don't get much choice given the RNHA allocations. So why should we not take our decisions where we can? Why deliver so many more units in the housing element than are required by even the onerous allocation we have been given? Greg Franklin has proposed a method by which we can deliver only what is needed to HCD without unintended consequences. So I'm out of time, but I, 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 I think we also need to look at fire risk more closely and make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a lawsuit with regard to that. No time though. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, go ahead.
Thank you, Randy Trugan. Bob offered me this three minutes. So there was just a discussion of enabling the community vision. And the reality is I don't think we all have the same shared vision. Sorry, I said, I think the problem is we don't have the same shared vision. And we don't have a process that's robust enough to get us to a solution that's going to be enduring and not fracture, the town not subject us to lawsuits. And yeah, I, you know, I, I read the letter with, with all the signatories and it's, and it is a list of impressive people. And it gave me pause having come out the way I have trying to release information I have. These are neighbors and respected leaders in the community. And those of us on the other side of this, we didn't go value those, you know, other neighbors. But I think there are a lot of people who not only aren't at this meeting, they aren't reading the PB forum. And that's a real problem. We don't have a robust enough process to deal with that. And even though all of the, the hundreds of hours and 40, 50 meetings, it's, it's not working. And it doesn't work because the there, there's just, we don't know what this silent majority is. They, you know, they seem to call us a vocal minority and but I was thinking the same thing, reading this, this, this letter. And, you know, what, so what knowledge do I have about what the silent majority wants? You did one survey at the beginning of 2022 in February and 95% of people said preserve parks and open spaces. And we had a previous ad hoc community to develop parks and open spaces that, that, that got shut down. So that plus the election. In fact, I mean, I talked, the first time I posted to the PB forum, the transcripts, I talked to a parent down at town center and I sort of, yeah, thought, oh, I posted PB forum and now people have seen it and I don't read PB forum and what's going on with the housing? Isn't that what the election was about? I think there are a significant number of people in that bucket, but look, it, you know, I could be wrong, but this process subjects us to those people coming out next year or, or even after this passes to, to get to put this to a referendum. So there's another track and that, that other track, I, I think risks this whole process much more. And that track involves doing the key things right. And the key things, I mean, I, I look at it like there are really two ticking time bombs. One is the ISMMD instead of any IR. Most jurisdictions in the Bay Area did the IR. If you do a simple search and I posted chat GPT questions about pros and cons of bias and the EBR and it talks about the legal risks of doing my ASMMD. So how, and there's a lot of material on the record about the inadequacy of the ISMMD. And there's a lot of material on the record about the, the pushback to remove objections or to move forward with it because of the housing element, not based on the merits of the ISMMD. And that's, that's a real legal problem. So these, I mean, I think these two things, these two, I guess what I'm calling ticking time bombs, the fact that we didn't do any IR, the fact that we have a housing and about prime choice parks to do 50 units of low income housing. I, I, I just don't see how we can move forward and we can get to a robust place without that, without, without an alternative housing element that doesn't have a park or open space on it and a, and a referendum to choose. And now, I mean, look, we, we had an election. We have three new council members, but our mayor and vice mayor are from the old council. And we haven't had any kind of town hall. I mean, you heard how blessed Christie was up here trying to finish and look how hard she's worked on this. But there's been no town hall. There's been no engagement. We, if we had, and what I mean by engagement is, 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 is true engagement with, with responses. And there are ways to achieve that. You could take, and I've, and I've offered these suggestions before, you could take up ranked questions. It's how you need to hear from the, 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 the people who want an alternative path. And it's a lot of people and, and actually engage with that. You know, it's, there's a discussion about the, um, about the 20 units and, uh, we were talking with Laura down at town center earlier today. And she, you know, as she clued us in, which was a reminder for me that, that the 20 units gets you to automatically be able to add low market. But then, but then she, she didn't add, but, but I said, what, but then, but then that also gets you the density bonus to get up to 40 units. And she mentioned some people see that as, you know, we, we were assuming that's, well, that's a bad thing. She's like, you remind us, some people see that as a good thing. So that's true. We, we, that is the situation here, but we need to deal with that diversity of vision in a way that will get us to something that's enduring, even if that takes another few months.
Todd.
Hi, Todd Van Horn. Like many others, this is also my first town council meeting, however, it is my second comment. So I wanted to start off thanking everybody who's been involved putting together this housing element, knowing several people who were involved with it. It was a ton of work and a lot of deliberation. A lot of viewpoints were considered, safety, fire safety, the state's requirements. An important consideration, the character of our town, keeping it rural, keeping nature a central element, which frankly is the reason we all moved here. You don't move to Portola Valley unless you love nature. But these are all thoughtful people and they pulled all these elements together. So it's very strange for me to hear people say that things were left out completely or things weren't considered. I know they were considered. I know they were debated and the problem is you can't, we use, you can't get a hundred percent perfect with every single factor. We have a very good, very thoughtful housing element. I implore you guys to pass it. It's time to pass it. It's time to put the builder's remedy risk aside to control our destiny as much as we can. And yes, the state has weighed in on how communities like ours need to proceed with housing. That's unfortunate. It takes away some of our control, but let's control what we can by passing this housing element. The other thing I want to say is other people have brought this up. I'm really disappointed by the lawsuits. There are certain people who think that their voice matters more than mine, that matters more than people in this room. I'm a voter, they're voters, but because people pass a lawsuit, they get to negotiate unilaterally with the town council. I don't know how you solve that as a council, but I do implore you guys, push back on misinformation. Push back on people who are putting together one sided stories. And yes, the housing element, it's very easy to put together a one sided story because there's so many details. I don't understand them all. That's why frankly, we elected you. That's why you put a housing committee together so they can understand them. But people cherry pick them and I've seen it happen. I've seen people post on the forum with cherry pick things. It's one of the reasons it's so important that you can refute that with facts. But push back, show leadership, explain. And, you know, hopefully that helps against some of these lawsuits. Thank you for the time. Thank you for your efforts and please pass the housing element.
Thank you, Todd. Other comments? Okay, I see no other hands here.
None via Zoom.
Thank you. Next up is going to be the discussion of the three lots, but I'm going to take, we're going to call five minutes or we'll go to, we'll break it till nine 40 and then we'll come back with that section over there. Can somebody, can somebody close the door and tell folks we're starting again? Thanks, Jim.
Judith and Sarah are recused, so they're not coming back until we call them.
Okay. Thank you. We are back in session. Are we recording? So council member, council member Hasto and Vice Mayor Wernikoff have recused themselves. And we are talking specifically about the three properties, 4370, 4388 and 4394 Alpine Road. We will take council questions now of staff on those three specific properties. And then we will take a vote, which is to whether or not to include those three properties in the site's inventory at the proposed density. So questions for staff, Mary.
Oh, well, I, I have asked this question already and it's been discussed by people in the audience as well. And I, and I think I, I understand the number 20. Or no, it's actually 21 on here for 4394. But I wonder if as things, as residents have asked us to reduce it to 19.
Mary, do you mind speaking into your mic, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
As beings as residents have asked us to, to reduce that number from 21 to, to 19, if you would just tell the rest of the council and people here, why, why that, what the significance of that is and why? Both, both the significance for these three lots and then for our lots around the rest of the town.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify based on some of the public comments. So there's a lot of different laws that apply to the different parts of this and it's very hard to keep everything straight. And so the first thing I would say is related to the state density bonus law. There seems to be a perception that the state density bonus law only applies if the site is zoned at 20 units per acre and that is not correct. Density bonus applies to smaller projects as well, I believe down to six units. And so 20 units per acre is not a magic number related to density bonus. So reducing the zoning of the site down to 19 doesn't substantially change the density bonus risk. So even at 19 units per acre, if there were an affordable housing developer at this location and they built in a hundred percent affordable housing project, then that still would total 40 units. My rough math done here tonight. There's, in my mind, a lot of reasons why that would probably not happen. There's economic reasons, there's financing reasons. I think it's very unlikely outcome that that would happen. But the most important takeaway is 20 units per acre is not a magic number for state density bonus. That's kind of point number one. Point number two is related to a housing element law and, and has to do with timelines. So since the town didn't adopt our materials by the end of January, we are subject to the more stringent laws, which say that all of the sites that are in our inventory that have affordable housing have to be zoned at 20 units per acre and accommodate a minimum of 16 units. So there's also implications there that we have talked about some, but I don't know if people really understood all the intricacies of that. So that's another reason why we can't do what is suggested to reduce it down to 19 units per acre. It wouldn't help us and we can't do that.
What, what's the law on the 20 that requires the 20, just to keep track of it? It's an SP something or other, I imagine.
No, it's just part of the general housing element law. It's just one of the main, you know, things that people have been keeping in mind.
It's called the Mullen, it's called the Mullen limit, right? The Mullen density.
Well, it's related to that. So there's the concept that's called either the default density or the Mullen density. And that concept is that when something is zoned at 20 units per acre, then you can assume there's going to be affordable housing units there. So it's kind of a magic number and it is to the, to the public comments that were made earlier, it is to sort of make HCD happy because that is the number that has been established as the threshold to say that you can accommodate affordable housing because they had to pick some number. And that's the number that applies to towns like ours. In some places that number is higher.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I think, I missed though, I didn't quite understand is after January 1st, you were saying that the 20 units per acre was required and I kind of missed that, that piece of it. Where is that coming from?
It comes from the housing element law. So that's a long, it's a long series of laws that is periodically amended. When it's amended, it might be, you know, what, like an AB number, but it's in, just in the housing element law. Like in the same kind of section that talks about that default density.
Other questions? Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Mary, did you want, if you have other questions, go ahead and finish.
I think I'm okay.
Okay, Craig, go ahead.
So I had a question. I think Judith was probably trying to get at it well, but I was trying to understand on the definition of, and a unit being counted as traditionally a dwelling unit. And I couldn't quite understand, well, is, is that going to pass like the, the Rena numbers? Cause I thought like for Rena, you had to have things like kitchens and stuff. And this seemed to be saying something a little bit different. So could you help me understand this is on page 68, I think of the document or page four of the errata?
Um, this is actually a good one for Cara. Cara worked with the property owners attorneys on this. And I know put some thought into the definition of what's a housing unit.
Sorry, which page, Greg? So I think, so it's on page four of the errata and I think that's page 68 of the whole document. Page 89, if you're looking at the page numbers at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's hard for me to, I mean, Adobe tells me it's page, it's, oh yeah, it's, it is page 89 in the- Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, 89, sorry.
Yes, so generally under housing element law, a, the definition of a dwelling unit needs to include a bedroom, a, a kitchen, a separate kitchen and a bathroom. However, there are certain types of housing arrangements that do not satisfy that strict definition of a dwelling unit. An example is a college dorm. You have a whole bunch of rooms and each of those rooms do not have a separate kitchen. So under housing element law, that you cannot count dorm rooms as a Rena unit. And so in the supportive housing context, there is a similar type of arrangement where each one of the supportive housing rooms may or may not have its own kitchen. If residents are able to live independently, those units will have a separate kitchen, but certain units may not have a separate kitchen. And so in the, in the, in the housing- And so, in the, in the, in the housing element program, we describe the different scenarios to accommodate the type of particular supportive housing project that the owner was looking at exploring and giving him some flexibility in order to truly support the construction of supportive housing at that site.
I guess what I was trying to understand is, would then HCD consider that a housing unit?
So, we are in discussions with HCD. It's kind of one of those situations where, on the one hand, there's a set of regulations that strongly encourages supportive housing and requires you to zone for supportive housing, but then the traditional housing element set of regulations don't really count supportive housing units as, as dwelling units. And so, we are in discussions with HCD, and the language that we crafted recognizes that they may not. And so, we, in our allocations, we look at the lower end, and we assume that HCD would not view all of those planned units as RENA dwelling units.
And that's how we have the range, that kind of what we're, that's sort of four to twenty or whatever? I forget the exact number, but I mean, that's the, that's the idea.
That's one of the reasons, yes.
Okay, and so, do we know? I mean, it's where, where, where do we think we're gonna come out on that? Because the reason I'm asking is I'm wondering, like, is a bunkout with a bunkhouse for workers that had a common kitchen? Or is it just something that only works with supportive housing? Like, I'm just trying to understand a little bit better where we think this potential is, even though we don't know for sure.
Right. It's, it's an evolving area of the law, but because there is a separate section that talks about farmworker housing, but we don't, you know, we don't have a lot of farmworker housing projects, and HCD has not made formal opinions on, on how to count kitchens in that context. But this is sort of an academic issue, because the developer of this property has a particular, it has a project in mind. It hasn't yet been proposed. We don't know what it's going to be, but we wanted to provide flexibility so that as that project came to fruition, they would be able to comply with the underlying zoning that we created, even if the units did not strictly meet the definition of a RENA unit. Generally, when you consider density, you look at a, a more traditional unit that has a kitchen.
And to add on to that, I would not be surprised if there are changes in the law on this topic or clarifications in interpretation on what counts as a unit based on the laws that we've seen in recent years that specifically address supportive housing, require and assist supportive housing. So, I think this, this is an area that could likely change.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that, too. And again, I'm, I think I'm generally supportive of the idea. I'm still struggling, like, why do we have to put this in here at all? Like, what, what is it that we are protecting by doing this? I mean, if it's zone four to twenty, or whatever the number was, then what, what is this particular piece doing in that regard? Like, what, what, what are we trying to get after with this, right? I mean, if we left it out, what would, what would be different?
So, what we tried to do was provide upfront what the range of potential, of a potential project could be, and it was a matter of transparency. But the developer at the time, the owner at the time, was not able to commit to the number of units. And so, we had this range, starting at four units. And the supportive housing piece of this was all crafted in order to allow a supportive housing project to go in. Otherwise, you would be, you, you know, the, the property would just have the underlying, the underlying twenty units per acre market rate housing designation.
I see. So, this is just a way of having these zones at twenty, but build viewer under the definition of a dwelling unit?
That's one way of looking at it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess I, I still wasn't completely clear. I mean, I, I'm gonna trust you as counsel that this is an important piece, but, and I, and I think I understand what, what they're after. I just didn't understand what this wording was actually getting at. Thank you.
No other question? I have none either. This point, we are, the question in front of the three of us is to, whether or not to include the three properties, forty-three seventy, forty-three eighty-eight, and forty-three ninety-four Alpine Road, in the sites inventory and accept that as part of the housing element before we discuss the whole housing element. So, we can discuss. I can take a motion on that.
So, I would make that motion, and, and this is just to accept the three properties into the housing element?
At the, at the densities they're at.
Right.
At the listed densities. Okay, no further discussion. Okay, we'll call votes.
Councilmember Haffey?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye.
Motion came.
That motion is accepted. Can somebody text Sarah and Judith? Hang on one minute. We're waiting for the other council members to come back from the table. Okay. Councilmember Hasko and Vice Mayor Wernikoff have rejoined us at the dice, and we are on to the final question of approving the, adopting, approving the full housing element. We had questions, but are there any other follow-up questions or points? Does anyone have any questions for staff now?
I have one.
Mary?
I know you've talked about it already, but I think it's important for everybody to realize where we are in relationship to other communities in terms of this, because there's a sense of anxiety in the community that we're the last sort of in, or that we're so far behind, or whatever. But, you know, it seems like this is our third draft. We've actually made quite a bit of progress on our housing element, right? So, if you could put that in perspective for me, because I've been sort of trying to say, don't be too frantic. We're actually in the middle of the pack, you know? We could still get back in the lead if we wanted to. You know, that, where, where we really are in terms of what the realities are of, of our success or lack of success in, in this process.
Okay, if we're measuring success by timeliness.
Yep, yep.
Related to this question. There was a time in the middle of the process that we were pretty far ahead. We started the process earlier than, I think, any community that I can think of. About February of twenty twenty-two, were very eventful ad hoc housing element committee meetings related to sites inventory. And then we had what I termed the big pivot, where we went back to council, got additional feedback, looked at a bunch more options, and kind of broadened the scope of the ad hoc housing element committee's work. At that time, that was very important to the community, but I would assess that at that time is when we were no longer sort of leading the pack on timeliness, because we took the time to do those things last spring. In terms of where people are today, there's a pretty wide range, both in San Mateo County and in the Bay Area. Everyone in the Bay Area is on the same schedule. The law says that we were supposed to have completed our housing element by January thirty-first. There were a handful of communities in San Mateo County that hurried up and finished and adopted housing elements by January thirty-first. There are a handful that are going through a similar kind of stage that we are right now, and there's a few that are still farther behind us. So, we're kind of in the middle right now, so to speak. For some people, their environmental review was the thing that took the longest. For some people, it was similar to us, that the discussion about the sites and how to achieve the RENA numbers took the longest. So, only Redwood City is sort of finished, so to speak, and certified. Menlo Park is close to achieving that, and there are a couple of places in our area that have only recently put their first submittal into HCD. So, that's the range.
Yeah, we're on our third.
We, if, if, well, we've submitted to HCD once. We are on our third draft. Yeah. So, there's a, there are some, Woodside, for example, to my knowledge, has submitted to HCD for their second submittal, but they haven't completed their environmental review, so they can't adopt it. So, they're not in a position to be able to adopt it and self-certify.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary, do you have other questions?
Nope.
Greg?
So, kind of like going into the time warp, what, what are we doing?
Oh, so.
When you want to step out?
We, we approved, so what we, what we approved was the three properties on Alpine are approved in the housing inventory at the densities where they were. Everything is in place now for us to, to vote on the whole housing element itself. Questions about the general housing element? I was just giving one more chance of questions.
Or in staff questions?
This attachment, Exhibit D? What is it, and what are we supposed to do with it?
So, there were a few comments that were raised about a January fourth letter that was, that was sent to the town by the fire district, and then we sended approximately forty-five minutes later after the letter was, was submitted. And community members have talked a lot in public comment about that, that letter. The findings show that the, that the particular letter that was submitted is not credible evidence of fire safety issues for purposes of the ISMMD for a variety of reasons, and those reasons are listed in the attachment.
But in terms of what we're trying to address tonight, how do we think about this? Is this supposed to be approved? What, I don't know how to think about that.
Oh, okay. Yes, so this particular set of findings, staff would recommend be attached to the resolution that adopts the housing element. As, when you adopt the housing element, you also have to make an additional sequa finding that the ISMMD has been prepared and that the housing, housing element addresses, or that the ISMMD addresses the issues in the housing element that you are adopting. And so, we would recommend that these findings, these supplemental sequa findings, be attached to the resolution, and that would be Resolution One in your packet.
Okay, I didn't see these before today. So, is it possible to have a separate vote on this, or is it an all or nothing?
Sure, you can have a separate vote on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, any questions? No. So, at this point, we can discuss, or we can entertain a motion. If you want to do that separately, you can entertain, to motion. Sorry, please.
I, I have comments at some point, but I do feel a little disoriented, so I, I wanna collect my thoughts, let other people go.
Sarah, if you have comments, why don't you go ahead?
I also, I think it is, you know, I empathize Judith when you're out of the room and you come back in. So, if you could just level set where we are and then what the next steps are, I think that'll be helpful.
So, the three of us approved the three properties on Alpine Road to be added. We've accepted those three properties into the, into the sites inventory at the, at the densities that were proposed, so that part. So, basically, we have an intact, every housing else, housing, the housing inventory is intact. The whole housing element is sort of here, and we're at the point that we can approve the whole housing.
Okay, so, when we're done with questions?
We have, we had questions for staff. I was saying.
We did it all, yeah.
We had questions for staff if you asked more.
Okay.
This is discussion and.
And so, if people want to make comments, now would be the time before the vote. The other thing is, I'm hearing from Judith. I want to put words in your mouth that you might wanna bifurcate something here. So, I don't know if you want to discuss that now, or how you want to handle that.
Okay, so, public comment is done on, so it's back to us.
So.
Yes, there was one public comment.
Okay. So, I've heard that people are having a hard time hearing people, so if we could all just, not in the room, but on Zoom. Especially, Mary, I'm not picking on you, but I've heard that people can't hear you.
I've just not been saying much.
So, with respect to these findings, I would not, I, I don't feel prepared to vote on it. I haven't had enough time. I haven't had enough chance to understand the background and the implication. So, I would abstain from this. And whether I can do that in part by one vote, one motion, and I'm abstaining from this particular part, or two, I would think two is better, but I completely defer to you on the right process.
I'd say there's no reason not to do two, right? So, we, we can have two motions. We can vote on the housing element, and then we can vote on whether or not to append, append exhibit D to that housing element. But, yes, please, I don't mean to rush anyone, so if there's more discussion or comments, I'm happy to hear them. Mary, do you have any comments?
I, I guess, I, I, just to be clear, I'd need to know what the motive of putting this into the housing element. I mean, is it, is it to clarify the situation and to answer the needs of the fire district? I mean, is it basically part of the negotiation with the fire district came up with this? Well, that's the way I understand it.
Right. So, we have Rick Jarvis, who is our special sequa council on the, on the call, so I'm gonna ask Rick to address that issue, please.
So I'm going to ask Rick to address that issue, please.
Good evening, council members. The primary purpose of the additional findings, you know, the town just got served with a notice of a threatened lawsuit. And the threatened lawsuit focuses quite a bit on that January letter and/or the January unsigned draft letter that came from the fire department. And because of this issue that has been raised and threatened with, and litigation was threatened over that, we reviewed that and discussed this with staff and felt that it was important to sort of clarify the record that that letter was withdrawn. It was not sent, the ultimate request from the fire official as to that letter was not forwarded on to the council. And to clarify our view that it's not properly part of the administrative record for the various reasons set forth in the findings, and even if it were deemed to be part of the administrative record, the opinions set forth in the letter itself were not substantial evidence, and were not actually reflective of the extensive dialogues we've had with the fire department.
Prior to that letter?
And since the, after the, in the last, in the month since the letter, the, we've, you know, the town staff has worked with the fire department. The last resolution that the council adopted on this includes the measures that the fire district had requested. So we are, the, the town and the fire district are cooperating together, and that letter suggests a different view than the views that have been expressed by the fire department to, to the town. And part of this is litigation driven. I mean.
That's, that's, I guess that, that's to clarify. Right. That, that, thank you.
Okay. Craig, any questions, comments?
You know, this has been a, a long process, and it's been a challenging process, and I think we're kind of, at least in my mind, we're at a time where we need to make a decision. I feel like we've made some good progress. We've got the sunrise that we've added to basically try to protect Woodford Park and open space. And we have the post-adoption plan, which I think has a lot of critical and important things. I hope that everybody's actually looked at that list. I think that's where, you know, beyond the housing element itself, that's where we're going to have an opportunity to basically make sure we get all the other things that, as a community, we think are important. So that's kind of where I feel like we're at at this point.
Sure, I have some comments. I prepared them earlier and thought about them out in the car. Okay. To be clear, I believe Portola Valley needs diverse housing options. And I also believe that the state mandates do not provide the right means to that end for our community. Before I cast my vote or tell you what I'm inclined toward, I have a few brief remarks. First, there's a category of things that I know. I know the state mandates have placed the town between a rock and a hard place. Either we comply with these state housing laws by submitting this housing element as-is, or we risk significant penalties for delays while we try to optimize and approach the best respects Portola Valley's efforts. I know the housing element update process has been exhausting, divisive, and challenging for all. I know we should be proud of the extraordinary efforts made by our community and staff to address these challenges creatively and thoughtfully, and to comply with these laws while avoiding legal penalties that could fundamentally change our town. There's a lot I don't know, but I'll list only a few. I don't know how HCD is going to view this housing element. I don't know how the state mandate may play out in a, in the future, given various efforts to challenge and modify the law. I don't know if or when builders remedies or other punitive measures will be imposed on the town for non-compliance. I don't know what alternate sites and opportunities may become available in the future for town housing. Doesn't really give you a lot of direction, so then you go to, what do I believe? I believe our town needs to move forward rapidly to implement our post-adoption plan, safety element update and evacuation plan, among other efforts to protect the values of our town. I believe our town needs to work with other communities and organizations to understand options to potentially challenge and modify the housing laws, to educate state leaders on wildlife, urban, interface, community, housing issues that others do not face, and to advocate effectively for these communities in the state legislative process. I believe our town has enormous human resources, offering unique talent, energy, and creativity. We must continue to tap this amazing resource and work together to meet our challenges. So where does that lead me? Before I get to that, I really would like a commitment by the council to form as soon as possible a subcommittee and engage lobbyists potentially to monitor options to challenge and modify the law, to talk with state leaders, to educate them, and to work with similar communities to best advocate for our town. I still have reservations about including Glen Oaks in the housing element in light of the town's goals of not interfering with vibrant businesses, particularly when they employ very low-wage workers we're trying to accommodate in part, a principle with which I agree. I strongly encourage Stanford and Glen Oaks to continue to consider creative options that could result in very low or low-income housing for workers as previously approved by the town. And I commit to help in any way I can to facilitate that, to enable the business to continue while creating some housing. But forced to choose between, on the one hand, adopting a non-optimal housing element, there are pieces we all like. It's not perfect. And on the other hand, further prolonging the divisiveness we have long experienced in this process without any certainty of achieving a better and timely result in the future, I reluctantly would support the adoption of the housing element. Thank you.
Judith? Sure.
I also prepared some comments. The process that I, I know for some of you, you've heard me say this many times, but I want to make sure I get this on the record because I'm hopeful this will be the last time. The process to date has been extremely thorough and robust. As of this moment, over 145 hours of public meetings, leveraging the input and guidance of many hundreds of community members who provided comments by Zoom during COVID in person and through written comments, the 15 ad hoc housing element committee members, seven former and current planning commissioners, and the input from geologic and wildfire, wildfire experts, including Woodside Fire Protection District over a nearly 20-month period that began in August 2021. Portola Valley's process has been the most robust housing element process on the peninsula, possibly the entire nine-county Bay Area, despite having one of the smallest populations, staff, and budget in the state. A process that we have much to be proud of, but as has been pointed out tonight, has also come at a very high cost. Over $500,000 in untold opportunity costs. And as I've been thinking about it, that's a huge part of the dialogue that I've been, that's been missed. I mean, how many things, if we weren't working on this, could we have been doing? As well as unprecedented staff resignations and loss of institutional knowledge. I want to take a moment to talk about Ford Park and open space, and basically say, yes, I get it. The first time, I mean, I remember it, and we were on Zoom Housing Element Committee, you know, probably a year and a half ago at this point. The first time I saw it as an option during that process, my heart sunk. I literally could not believe it, I'll be honest. And I had many sleepless nights thinking about it. But as those of you who know, know, who have been along for the whole ride, and all those meetings, and all those different places we looked at, stones we've turned, we don't have a viable option for the 50 very low and low-income units. At least this one is on town-owned property, so we have control, and it's near an evacuation route. So for those who are upset, and I know there are many of you out there, I urge you to get involved in the upcoming post-approval process, which was passed five to zero by the council about eight weeks ago. If you're not familiar with it, it'll be an 18-month process to reassess that site and options, if there are any, for the 50 low and very low-income units in the housing element. And so in sum, as since the original January 31st deadline, I continue to support the adoption of the housing element and do so with enormous gratitude for the many members of our community who have engaged in the process, whether it be from the beginning or just the last few days. Both those in support and those who disagree, all your voices and input has been a huge, made a huge difference to staff, especially Laura Russell and her team, and Dakara Silver, who I will miss dearly. Thank you. I have learned so much from both of you, and our community owes each of you an enormous debt of gratitude. I know we're not supposed to clap. This has been an incredibly complicated process. It's been exhausting, frustrating, and at times messy. And the results are imperfect and full of compromises. But we've learned, but as we've been learning together, that's the democratic process.
Thank you. I have a whole lot to add, except thank you. Thank you to all the members of the public that have participated over the last two years. Thank you to the volunteers who came out for the ad hoc committee and our other committees, who, who made this a better product at the end. Thank you to my colleagues, past and present, for all their support of this. And as, as Sarah pointed out, thank you to Laura, Kara, Adrian, our entire planning staff, our consultants of Gov. Carla, 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 thank you. You're on Zoom, and I'm terrible with names now. And, and the, and the full team at Urban Planning Partners or other consultants. So many people have put a lot of work into this product. And frankly, it, it, it landed in a very different place from where it started, largely because of public input and because a committee of people decided, arrived at a compromise. You know, a good compromise holds when you walk away unhappy, but you see the other people walk away unhappy. I think we've got something that frankly, everyone has something to be unhappy about. And that means we compromised. You know, it's not perfect. It's the best we could do. We've put a lot of time and effort into it. So I, I, I am proud of the process we went through. You know, we couldn't give everyone what they wanted. That's the way it is. But I look forward to hopefully passing this tonight. So with that, I will accept a, there are two items. There is the approval of the housing element, and there's the amendment, the appendant, appendment of exhibit D to that element. So I would, the first motion would be movement, motion to approve the housing element.
I, I would like to approve the housing.
Is there a second?
Wait, without appendix D?
Yeah.
Without it, without, without exhibit D?
Okay. I'd second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? We'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Hefte?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Alps?
Hi.
Motion.
Okay, next up is exhibit D.
Excuse me, just to clarify, that motion to, to approve the housing element was intended to approve the, the resolution attached as exhibit one to the staff report.
Okay, so then the question of exhibit D. Is there any discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to ask a question. How important is the second bullet? And I guess I'm addressing Mr. Rick Jarvis.
Sorry. I think it's important for the council to adopt a resolution that it can stand behind and if feels 100% comfortable. So it is fully within your discretion to make any modifications to the, any of the language. This is just a proposed draft prepared by staff and me collectively.
Okay, yeah, because I, I guess if, if we remove the second item, do we sort of diminish our kind of legal position significantly?
No, I think it strengthens the legal position if the record shows that the council made the start committee its own.
Sorry, as in, when you say second, you mean second, as in second the language and style?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so which is?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So we're exhibit D, where it says second the language and style.
Sorry, not the second paragraph.
Just for me, I've read it. It does sort of feel like that, but I feel like that's making a judgment call that I'm not sure I'm ready to make tonight. So I, I would be more comfortable if we were willing to remove that. I'm comfortable with the rest of it.
So you would like to amend? Well, let's, let's, let's certify this first, and then so you're asking, you would like to amend the, this exhibit D to not include that language?
That's, I'm proposing that we strike that one, that paragraph.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Second, it's the second bullet. It says first, and then it says second, and then it says third, and then it says fourth, and we're striking the second.
It's the paragraph that starts with the word second.
Yes, as opposed to the second paragraph. It's the fourth from the, from the fourth from the bottom.
So thank you for the clarification, but yes, second, the language and style. That's how it starts.
Yeah. What is, anybody else have any opinion on that? I, I'm.
I guess I. I have a question for Mr. Jarvis about the import of this. I certainly think there was a coincidence, but I'm curious for your point of view on that.
The import of what? The, this, the second par, that second paragraph?
One, that starting second.
It, these are different points of evidence that the, that the council's looking at to support its finding. So if you remove one of those, that's fine. And you think it just demonstrates that you're exercising your independent judgment. It is part of the evidence that sort of suggests that the language in the letter is not what it first appears to be. But it's not critical to the findings.
If we were to remove it, we can, I mean, we still, that, 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 that find, that finding could still be applied in a legal proceeding.
Yeah, I, this is, the council's making a factual determination, and it's important that you, the council collectively feel comfortable with what is said there, and that it reflects their own independent judgment, your own independent judgment.
But what I'm asking is, I mean, if this goes to, if this goes to litigation, we can still make the argument that, that the letter was cut and pasted. I mean, we can still make the argument in the finding, we just, even if we leave it out of this.
Yes, I, I can still point out that as one of the factors that supports your determination, even without you making that recital.
I would say I'm comfortable taking it out, so long as we can still proceed, as you just said, with that theory. So that's how I would land on that.
Well, I think it should be taken out because it doesn't do credit to our relationship with the firemen.
I have just a question, and maybe it's for Kara, Kara, maybe it's for Mr. Jarvis. This is related to pending litigation, correct?
It's related to threatened litigation. The litigation hasn't been filed, but we've received notice, yes.
I just want to make a comment about recusals. Is, is there a recusal? I'm.
I'm happy to be with you. Oh. Because this has been put into the. Oh, no, this is a separate, I'm happy to be with you.
Kara, what would you advise?
So when we discussed the threatened litigation in closed session, councilmember Hefte recused herself, not for a FPPC conflict of interest purpose, but based on the appearance of a conflict because of her relationship with one of the potential litigants. one of the potential litigants. So Councilmember Hafdi, if you want to carry that forward and refuse yourself on a similar basis with respect to this particular attachment, that is your personal decision. You can do that. Yeah, recu, yes, a recusal under those circumstances would just require you just not to vote and you can still sit on the dais.
Is that your decision?
Yeah.
You, you, you're recusing yourself from Exhibit D because of your potential conflict? Okay. In that case, in that case, I, just weighing in on Craig's suggested amendment, I am fine with removing, as long as we can retain the argument for litigation purposes. So in that case, we could take a motion on an amended.
None.
So we can, what I could do is entertain a motion on the amended version, which strikes that paragraph beginning with second the language and style. So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Haskell.
That's same.
Councilmember Hafdi.
Number two.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Alps.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Includes that. We will move on to item six.
So you have a housing element.
Certified.
Oh, and it's self-certified.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever. But like, I don't have.
I'm not complaining.
Good one, Mary.
Yes, item six. City Housing Team, Laura, go ahead.
Obviously, I was focused primarily on the other item. Adrian has prepared for us a PowerPoint.
Can we just say congratulations for all your hard work? Maybe before, before we leave.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can imagine why you were focused on that. So thank, thank you for all your hard work and for everybody else's. It really is a great effort.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so let me pull that up because just a lot going on in my mind right now. So just give me a quick second, figure this out. No, it's here somewhere.
So you're happy.
Computer doesn't. Yes, I'm relieved for all of us. I'm relieved for all of us.
Page two forty-one, if that helps.
It's been a long process. Okay, I can't, I can't find this. So here we go.
Page, so page two forty-one, if that helps.
I, I can't find the PowerPoint because this computer is not working properly and I forgot about that until I came in tonight. But that's fine. We don't, we don't need it. We'll go for it. So as we have proceeded through the housing element process, as you know, we've been collaborating with twenty-one elements on lots of different aspects of this. And along the way, especially the smaller jurisdictions, have been talking about the fact that it's really difficult to implement new housing programs when you don't have dedicated housing staff. So larger cities kind of think about maybe like kind of San Carlos size is the cutoff. Like San Carlos has somebody that does housing in combination with some other tasks. Those of us that are smaller don't have any dedicated housing staff. And so it comes down to us, Adrian and myself, to be able to handle a really wide range of topics. Housing is very detail-oriented. You have to have knowledge of certain laws, funding sources, have good connections, be connected to nonprofits in order to have really successful programs. So the idea came through twenty-one elements, kind of in the middle of the housing element development process, to potentially develop a shared housing staff so that the towns and cities within the county could go in together and basically purchase staff time together in a very cost-effective manner. And so that idea was developing in the background while we were working on our housing element. So we did actually include a program in the housing element to explore this option of having a shared housing staff. We anticipated this would be coming up before us. So what they ended up with is they have seed money from the county. So the county has volunteered to put in money to fund some of the startup costs associated with this program. And then the program is proposed to rest with HEART, which is a countywide program that works on affordable housing. It's the Affordable Housing Trust, San Mateo County. They have a very reputable executive director who has been a city staff member in housing in the past. And they did some preliminary outreach to us to kind of get a lot of feedback and think about what might be useful. So in combination, all the cities and towns have developed a list of housing work that could be accomplished by this multi-jurisdictional housing team. And what came out of this is the idea that there would be one manager or supervisor that would be like a highly skilled person and then a mid-level person and then a lower level person. So it would be a three-person team shared across multiple cities and potentially even a larger team if needed. Then depending on what each individual town or city needs, we could go through that team to meet our individual needs. So we've outlined for you in the staff report, a couple of the programs that we think that they would be useful and working with us on. Those are just examples. We also think that there could be some specialized things that come out of the post-adoption plan that we could have these folks work on. And so it's a way to augment our staff with specialized knowledge and resources that is much more cost-effective than if we were going to hire consultants from a traditional planning or housing firm. So we think this is a very cost-effective way to add the capacity that we need to be able to do the work that's coming up. We're bringing it to you now because I wanted to be able to include this information in budget proposals as we're working on the budget. So that's why it's in front of you this evening. Ousing point two FTE, which is the lowest amount. And then you can kind of, you can see in the staff report on the table what the dollar range is there. About thirty, you have it in front of you, thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand dollars for the first year. It would start this summer, so the fiscal year that's coming up right now. So that would be very helpful timing for us to be able to get someone up and running as soon as they've been able to hire staff. So we're proposing the lowest level. We could potentially increase that over time if we needed it. They've asked us for a three-year commitment so that they can provide some continuity in staff over time and provide some assurances to housing professionals that there's going to be work for at least three years. So this is just a letter of intent. It's a, you know, it's a very soft letter. It's not a final commitment. We would bring back to you the contract with the final commitment and all of the terms at an upcoming meeting. But we wanted to be able to tell them whether the town is interested in participating and we wanted to have that information for budget purposes. So the council would be making a tentative, you know, soft commitment that we're interested and we want to pursue this from a budget and planning point of view and that you would want to see that contract back. I would expect our costs to go up, you know, like reasonable amount, similar to CPI for the second and the third year. Some cities have approved this in letter of intent at a city manager level. But this council here approves these dollar amounts through the council. So we wanted to make sure you were aware of it. So that's the highlights. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Questions? Mary, go ahead.
Can you tell us who else has gone in?
We can't.
Good.
Um, Atherton is participating. They've sent in their letter. They're doing a point two FTE like us. Belmont is in point five FTE. Brisbane is in point two. Burlingame, point two. East Palo Alto, point two. Hillsborough, point two. Menlo Park, point two. Milbrae, Pacifica. All point two. San Bruno, San Carlos, all point two. And Woodside is also in at point two.
How about Half Moon Bay?
Um, Half Moon Bay has, has said no. That is not necessarily a final decision.
So if I understand, this is this kind of a two-step process. I mean, one, we sort of provide this letter of intent and then we come back to it. Is there a concern that they don't get enough uptake? That this doesn't go forward or that the price goes up?
Based on the preliminary feedback and the number of cities that are involved, interested so far, I think the program will go forward.
Okay, so all those point twos added up to roughly three FTEs is the idea? Okay, great, thank you.
Is this a new system or has it been going on for a while and it's just something that we're aware of?
This is new.
But it's next, I mean, it's kind of an extension of twenty-one elements which we shared or is it? I mean, it, the concept is an extension of that.
The concept builds on the level of collaboration that we have in San Mateo County, which is pretty unusual. So this is the first time we've taken this collaboration so far as to consider basically sharing staff.
And your interactions with twenty-one elements is generally positive, cooperative, productive, well-trained. I'm just looking for a sanity check on that. And essentially, you're going to outsource to people who are trained and knowledgeable in an appropriate area. It's the advantage is you don't have to do this yourself.
Yes.
And commit to an entire person.
Yeah, I, I consider the team at twenty-one elements to be a leading team on these issues. And probably most importantly, they know what they don't know and call for reinforcements. And then the executive director at HEART, I know quite well, and I consider him to be highly qualified to be the executive manager over this team.
Thank you.
Sir, question? And again, we could, we can reasonably foresee that we will need these functions in the next year. I mean, if we, if we don't do this, we know we'll have to figure this out somewhere else. So it's not, it's pretty clear that we will need this.
I definitely think we need these resources and I think this is a very cost-effective way to get them.
Any other questions from the council? Any public comment on this item? Anyone here?
Nobody online at this point.
Okay, seeing no hands. No, they're, they're still, sorry, there's thirty people on Zoom, but there are no hands. Okay, seeing no public comments, then I can take discussion or a motion to approve.
And the motion is to approve the letter of intent, right, to come back with a fulsome agreement.
In terms of discussion, I mean, I'm wildly in favor. I think we, we still have a lot of work to do with the post-adoption stuff. So I think any help we can get for planning, this seems like a very cost-effective way to do it. So I'm very supportive.
My, my only question was, are, are we capable of explaining to them how weird we are?
Well, they know.
No.
Are they willing to, are they willing to work with our model?
Unknown at this time.
Just to be clear, that's not, I mean, you're, I mean, for better or worse, you're that interface into our process.
Correct.
You're going to ask them to do stuff, which is going to be a work product to you, which you're going to bring in your usual professional manner, explain to us.
Yes.
Right, so I'm, I'm not too worried about, you know, what they do behind the scenes. This is a little bit like the way she's been using consultants. This just happens to be a shared consultant. So I think we're getting pretty, pretty good pricing on it. So I mean.
Yeah, they're going to be doing mostly behind-the-scenes tasks. I imagine they'll report to Adrian, you know what I mean? She'll divvy up tasks. And so most of it, you know, the public and the council won't even really see the, the type of work we're talking about.
No, makes sense.
Second, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hafdi.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Yes.
Mayor Alps.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could this have been the easiest planning thing we've done in like the last few years?
Yeah, probably.
Somebody came up with a good idea, which is.
Okay, item six B, the not-for-profit funding requests. Is this Howard?
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, the town has received requests for funding from a number of not-for-profit agency. Throughout the years, the, the number, the types of agencies and number of agencies has been refined by staff and council. The process, the process that has been traditionally, the process has been that these are brought forth to the council for consideration and discussion prior to placing in the proposed budget. So once again, I just want to clarify. We're trying to get feedback on this list and the amounts, and then it goes into the draft budget. And then you also get a second chance of providing input too, once we take a look at the draft budget. But it won't be at, at, at this granular level. It'll be a very high level. So the memo indication shows charts comparing last year's requests and this year's requests. The total of, the recommended total is about twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. And I know in light of some of the fiscal impacts, we're here to solicit any comments. In addition, it is possible in the planning process for next year to consider different agencies and amounts also. So to summarize, we're just recommending approval of the tax list. Thank you. And I'm here for any questions.
Questions from Howard.
I just had one. I was a little confused about the, you were saying we won't see it this granular. So you're saying that when we get to the budget, we're just going to see a single line item and somehow these are all going to be underneath that line item?
Yes.
So then, I mean, how, when, when will decisions like the amount for surf, I mean, are we, are you, are you asking us to tentatively approve the budget, the recommended numbers to the twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one? Is that the ask here?
The, the ask here is to go over and, and agree with these agencies and amounts so that we could put it in the draft budget. Which, which also saves time from talking about it at the draft, you know, during budget time also.
Okay, but I think you're asking for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one, right?
I mean, we're, we're, this is a question, is this the appropriate list of, of, of groups to donate to and are the amounts appropriate? This is, this would be the time to, we could talk about whether they're appropriate or whether to adjust them.
Okay, so then I guess my large question here, which is this was came from just past experience? I mean, and if we, if we got another, is it just that we don't get other requests or have we gone out looking? I mean, I guess I don't really understand the process. I get the, the ones that are here, but I don't really understand how this process evolves. Yeah, thanks.
We've, I mean, we've been doing this for years. And so it's sort of, I mean, some of these are, we've been giving to them for probably, probably a decade at this point or more. It's kind of, I mean, a little bit of it is just kind of inertia. They sort of, they, they put in a request and they put it away years ago and we just kept them on. And they, they actually renew their requests. I don't think that we've gotten a lot in the way of sort of, I mean, not many people come to us just with de novo requests. So we don't see a lot of new requests. And I mean, honestly, we've kind of, we've had this group and we've just sort of been giving to them and not really putting a lot of thought into it over the years because it's sort of, everyone has agreed they're appropriate things for us to donate to and that we think the amounts are reasonable. And so it's just kind of gone along. I mean, we, we could go out and, and think more actively about it in the future. It's just, this is a group that's kind of come to rely a little bit on our donations that we've been comfortable with. It's, you know, it's not, you can't just go out and give to any group you want, right? You've got to, there's got to be some guidelines or some, some thoughts about guardrails, so to speak, so you don't just go out and give to some inappropriate group. So it's sort of, it's been here for a while. We've been doing this for a long time. It's not necessarily a reason to keep doing it, but these are, like I said, these are groups that we've all sort of, over time agreed were reasonable groups to be donating to in a reasonable amount.
Okay, I guess, and maybe the sustainable sort of gets, I'm surprised there's not a little bit more environmental. Okay, I guess, and maybe it's the sustainable sort of gets, I'm, I'm surprised there's not a little bit more environmental, um, groups here, because I would have thought that, you know, it's a pretty strong ethic within the town.
Well, some of these come from outside, I mean, some people come to us for these donations, I don't know that, nobody really come to us, I can't remember the last time somebody came to us from the, within the town and asked us to donate this other, to, I mean, some, there are people intended to advocate for certain work, but I can't remember the last time anybody actually came in. It's sort of, I mean, um, I'm not sure people are aware of it, honestly, like, I don't know if we've ever really sort of, I don't.
My understanding is we haven't proactively solicited, um, people to request funding, number one, so these are a couple of things, this has been ongoing, for better or worse, that's the list. We haven't proactively pursued alternatives and this is what has organically come in the door. To be fair about how the list is derived, I think those are the criteria, as far as I understand it.
Are we on questions or comments?
Oh, that's a good, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I still, I still trying to ask questions.
Good question.
We haven't gotten public comment yet. But thank you for not letting me drift into. Is there public comments on this item?
There are two hands raised.
Uh, Rita, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you for taking my comment, uh, with, with our fiscal issues that, you know, no audit for several years, uh, no year-end financials for, um, a couple of years and, uh, where then, you know, I, I noticed that one ask was just an invoice, not what the benefits of our town, you know, uh, is getting from it. So, uh, I, I asked before you approved this list to at least, with our current fiscal awareness of the town residents, to just say what each of these groups, what benefits, you know, here it is, uh, Housing Element just passed, you know, they have some interesting names and there was a proposal by, uh, Laura Russell about all these people that can help us in the future. How can these people help us in the future? You know, a thousand dollar, you know, invoice, uh, sent to the town and the town's just going to turn around and pay it, you know, to be fiscally responsible, what is it that this group actually does, uh, and what are we getting from it? Uh, moving forward, we, we have to be more fiscally responsible and, you know, you got to start sometimes with the small numbers, not just writing off the big numbers. And so I, I would like to see more information and not just say, oh, we've always given them money and so let's just give them money again. And when we haven't had an, uh, an audit for a couple of years and we haven't been having year-end financials, thank you.
Thank you, and I believe Betsy had her hand up.
Uh, first, just to congratulate everyone sitting here tonight and in town for passing our Housing Element. And, and I spoke, I think, two years ago, and maybe I'll get a chance to speak two years from now, that I, I puzzle at, um, a slightly more passive, not as engaged approach to the process of our, uh, town's philanthropy. And also, it seems so proximate to what is otherwise our budget cycle coming up. I have wondered why it sits apart from that budget cycle where we decide that we're going to give so much money away. And lastly, I would urge that we not give every year to the same, to the same group of people, but that we have some kind of a method of, um, two years on, one year off, something that breaks what is otherwise a, a strong expectation and need on the part of a nonprofit. So thank you for hearing my comments, again, congratulations on a very full agenda, it's a late night and I could just hear Laura walking to her car singing, I could have danced all night.
Thank you, Betsy. Any more hands up?
Uh, one more, Catherine Gilpin.
Uh, Catherine, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think the other two people said it well, um, we are, we should be carefully considering any philanthropic donations based on what our budget looks like, what we can afford. And I also agree, we should not become, um, reliable to any one organization because our values are going to shift and what the community believes in changes. So I think this should be built into the budget and I think there should be some type of strategic review as to why we're doing it. And also, I didn't know we'd approved the housing, the housing, affordable housing, uh, work and effort and I'm thrilled to hear that, I was putting my kids to bed, so congratulations to you guys, I know this has been a, a long, long journey, so I hope you're feeling great, that's it.
Thanks, Catherine. You want to have it?
No, no more hands up.
Okay, um, discussion, um, well, you have the proposals and, and, any questions about the organizations or?
Yeah. I have no good organizations, I mean, uh, I, I guess, um, my, my thought would be that we're not really in a position right at the moment to give money. Period. Um, so, that being said, uh, we've, we've been putting a lot of money into housing, I'm not sure that those, a couple of housing, uh, uh, philanthropies, we pretty much used up all our money already on housing. And the Housing Element, I'm not sure that we have, uh, money to, to that, to housing, um, to housing organizations and, uh, I, two sustainability programs. I mean, I, I'd love for sustainability, but maybe we just go with San Mateo County? And maybe we go, and this, maybe I'm not supposed to be cherry picking, but, uh, I think we should decrease our budget for the, these problems and maybe cut these in half, so we know what, how our finances are. At least, I don't know where our finances.
Other comments?
Yeah, as a new town council member, I hadn't been aware that these are regular expenditures each year. Um, of course, they're great organizations and it's really hard to say don't do that. Uh, that being said, it does seem a bit random to me. So, a couple of questions, how, do we know how long each of these organizations have been on this list, deceiving some amount?
I, I don't have that information right now, but I know that some of these organizations have been on for almost a decade.
Quite a while, um, and do other towns have similar funds and use them similar ways, or is this like a PD unique thing?
I, I believe other cities do fund some certain items also, such as pedestal conflict resolution.
Okay, um, do they typically lock for ten years? Do we know?
No, not, I think it's annually, just like we do, it's, it's, it's an annual request.
If I may, through the mayor. Um, in my experience, some cities will do community grant programs or they'll do other nonprofit sort of donations, we usually do them annually.
Okay, and is there a typical range of similar? Like, I, I'm just looking for any parameters here because it seems so random to me, but it's understandable, these are great organizations, so you know, for twenty, twenty thousand, I don't want to make the world's biggest deal of it, I mean, my own inclination would be we gotta, we gotta revisit this and we gotta revisit the amounts and, you know, do we want to be more strategic or more diverse, whatever. But I, I mean, right now we're coming up on a budget cycle, we've got some of its going in, on in town that I'm kind of wondering, do we really need to be deliberating on this now, um, can we put it in the budget and then say to be allocated in a way in the future? Um, like, what, what's our degree of freedom here, because we're all a bit tired tonight and we've got a ton to do coming up, so can we kick the can a little bit?
Yes, we can.
Well, what, are we, are we questions? I don't, I don't have any questions.
Well, well, you know what, we're, we're past public comments. I, you know, I mean, I will say a few things, um, SERP is, 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 I mean, we have, we have a lot of local SERP volunteers. Hip and, and Hart do a lot of, of sort of housing promotion throughout the county, we worked with Hart, I believe, on a home sharing program. They also, uh, work together to build a lot of larger multifamily housing throughout San Mateo County and frankly, I mean, building multi-housing family in other jurisdictions is, is, that's units we don't have to get allocated here. Uh, we've been working with them for a long time and I would argue that, that our, our good relationship with these housing advocates probably kept them from thinking about suing us when we were first out of compliance, I think, January. You know, I also think they do good work. Uh, joint venture Silicon Valley, I don't know if you're familiar with them, they do, um, they, they do, they do quite a bit of local government. They were very active in, um, Measure A a few years ago, um, the, the big, the, the, the property, the, uh, gas tax? There's a sales tax and it went towards transportation, I believe.
Oh.
Yeah, they were, they promoted that, they, 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 they do a lot of sort of large inter-agency things, I mean, they, they do some interesting stuff. And, uh, and, and they, and they, I mean, we are one source of funding for these groups, but they get a lot of other funding. Meals on Wheels, um, when you're, when you're mayor, you actually go, um, well, you used to go around and distribute meals. There's, we usually have three or four people in town that get, 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 get a meal, one or two meals from Meals and Meals, I was surprised to learn that. Uh, PCRC, uh, pedestal conflict resolution committee, um, does a lot of, they do a lot of things like mediation or what, you know, conflict resolution. They've actually, um, a few years ago when we had a housing, uh, uh, forum, they actually mediated, they, they sort of, sort of mediated conversations at every table, um, they're available for local, I mean, anybody who has, who wants sort of mediation of conflict can call them. They, they complained to us that they're underutilized, we fund them, it's this fairly small amount and they actually don't get a lot of calls. And we always, they're always asking us to encourage them. Uh, Sustainable San Mateo County does a lot of great work in terms of awareness of sustainability. In Silicon Valley, same thing, uh, I've worked with both of them and sort of, mainly working for my day job, um, you know, they're, um, I don't know, they do good work and I've always felt like it was a, you know, I mean, I don't, I hate to make light of this, but it doesn't, it felt like, it felt like a good, you know, they, they do rely on lots of small donations like this and that's why they're helping, helping, helping. It's part of being a good neighbor. So, maybe, are we, are, you want to wait and sort of reconsider this as part of a, start getting to the full budget?
Yeah.
So you'd like to see more budget numbers, the picture budget numbers?
Where we are with the funding.
I personally just think we have to make decisions as we come through and we're such as question things down the road, we have so many things during the backlog and I know we have a lot to talk about in the budget um, that are significantly bigger line items, I mean, I guess, uh, no, I personally will just speak up in terms of HIP Housing and, um, I'm going to forget the other one, Heart. Um, they're definitely doing all kinds of work within San Mateo County, which is exactly what has been discussed throughout the Housing Element of why aren't we identifying different areas for housing, investing and, um, shared housing, um, acquiring property within San Mateo County, these organizations do all that kind of stuff. HIP Housing is also, uh, listed, we, we, we talk about HIP Housing in our, our weekly newsletter, um, it came up significantly during, um, uh, I think it was definitely during the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee when we were talking about, um, uh, home sharing. Um, I just, I don't think it's the time to be cutting out their funding, so I would definitely strongly, uh, recommend that we fund those two in particular. And I don't think we should delay.
So, um, my, my thoughts on, I would say PCRC sounds a little bit like a contract for services rather than a, you know, charitable contribution, so it seems like slightly an odd place to me. I mean, I think what they do is good and, and I think Jeff, what you're saying is that, you know, we don't give them a lot of money and then we could probably get more services and we certainly talked with the post-adoption of, of, they may be doing some medi, um, mediated, you know, community meetings, so, I mean, we might be able to use them, I'm just wondering, is this really a charitable contribution versus this is a service? Um, so that's my question there, and on the SERP, um, I think the question I'd ask there is that we better understand their budgetary needs. Like, you know, we're, if we're going to redo all, say, the radio equipment that we have in the EOC, I mean, that's a fairly significant expense to the town, um, that SERP's not going to pay for. So, you know, I, I guess I'm trying to understand for, for that money, you know, what, what, what are we getting, what do they need in their budget? Because this is just so like, well, you know, you've done it before, just give us five thousand dollars. And I'm sympathetic if they need it, but I, I don't, I have no idea what their current, um, cash holdings are and, and what do they intend to spend in the next year, if they need the money, then I, I've been active in SERP for a long time, I'm, I'm all in favor, but let's make sure that they need this money versus, like Mary's saying, we're going to be in a tight budget, maybe we should be saving it and spending in our radio equipment instead, so I think having it bucketed to emergency services of some kind makes sense. Whether this is the right one or not, I, I just, I don't know, I, I just, I don't know what they're asking, I'm, I'm assuming in, in old days it used to be Woodside put in five grand, Fire Department put in five grand and we put in five grand. I don't know if that's still going, so I guess I'd like to at least understand, is everybody still contributing and then what's their proposal for, say, fifteen thousand dollars on an annual basis? Thank you.
Oh, moving, moving. If everybody else wants to delay it, I, that was just my point of view, you know, if everybody else prefers to delay it, then.
If, 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 if everybody were happy to do some red lines, I would, you know, I would go with that, but if we sort of say, okay, well, this is, this is all perfect.
Well, um, no, you could, no, you can suggest changes to them, you can.
If I may, through the mayor, just in my experience working on similar community grant type or council grant type projects, often council will select a dollar value if they feel more comfortable, I think that they're asking for about twenty-one thousand. If council was comfortable with a different amount to then alter potentially what we would be willing to offer the other groups or to maybe remove a group or not. Um, in my past, there's been sort of a process for it with accepting proposals, I know that's much lengthier and probably not something within our timeframe, but if we would be more comfortable selecting a dollar value given the budget concerns we have and then seeing how these could fit within that, that might be helpful.
Not good that?
I like that suggestion. I don't have a dollar amount in mind, um, I think given our budget situation, I think it's prudent to make it maybe less this year because we're going to have to be tightening the belt across the board, so I'd be in favor of that. Um, and then what, what do we do to make the allocation, we have, I hate to say the word, another subcommittee be looking at this or you know, how is it determined, how is it allocated, who owns that?
I mean, we could just set a dollar amount, just prorate every, each donation, we just.
Pro rata? I mean, you just take.
Yeah, just say fifteen thousand instead of twenty-one thousand, divide, divide the same way across those.
Well, that's, that's this for this year.
Okay, well, yeah, maybe I, maybe we can agree tonight that we're going to use this list and it's going to be pro rata. And maybe when we actually get the budget, we can decide, like, I have no idea whether it should be five thousand or fifty thousand. I mean, I, I just don't know what the rest of the budget numbers are, so picking the numbers seems weird to me, that's a budget question. But, but if we're saying we're happy with the pro rata side of it, I guess I'd, okay, I, I'd still kind of rather hear from these people, like, what, what would they do with our money if we gave it to them, and some of these people, they send us letters and says, you know, thank you, here's what we're going to do with your money and I'm pretty good with that, and Jeff, you sort of described what some of them do. So, you know, I, I would like from SERP, I, I would like some kind of letter from them saying, you know, here's what we'd like to do with the funds you give us. Um, and then if people want to do pro rata, I'm okay with that, I just don't know if I know what that number is.
You don't want, you don't want, you don't want people, you don't want to pick a number, you have to.
I, I just don't know how to pick it, I, I mean, you know, I'd love to, I mean, I'm with Sarah, I feel our, the more things we could get done and decided, the better, I just don't know how to think about it.
All right. I guess the first question would be, or does anyone have a strong opinion about donating or not donating to one of these? I guess the first question would be, or does anyone have a strong opinion about donating or not donating to one of these? So just take them off the list.
I agree with, um, Craig about the, um, uh, conflict resolution. I mean, we should, sounds like a great partner for when we need them, but I don't know, you know. I mean, not that I want to, but I mean, you, you can't just, we got to cut, we're going to have to make some serious budget decisions this year, so.
Well, and I was suggesting, we actually might need them, because I can imagine we're going to have. Well, I don't know if you pay them as you use them or we just, it just felt weird to me to put it under a charitable.
My understanding is we do, because I think we got a contract from them when we were considering, when we had plans, uh, fire group, at the fire, um, whatever that was.
Yeah.
Not, um.
But they, they, I mean, they, they do free conflict resolution throughout San Mateo County. That is a charity, I mean, they, they perform.
That's the charity, yeah, right. That's the charitable part.
Yeah, okay. We contract them.
It, it's just, it's this sort of agreement for services sort of makes it seem a little less, you know, more of a service and less of a charity.
Yeah, it'd be basically, it's, we, we have a contract and then, then they are available to our residents if anyone calls them. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit with Sarah. I, I, I can definitely see us using some kind of mediation. I'm not sure, just blanket, just whatever, why don't we just pay them for service? I mean, it may be the same amount, but let's pay them for services.
I don't know. I, I'd go pro rata 15,000 just in the spirit of, of moving along and keep these. And then next year, actually do the pressure testing because it would be more thoughtful. And we don't have, I don't have bandwidth, uh, to be more thoughtful. They're all, like I said, they're all great organizations, it seems. But we should revisit it at some point.
10,000.
What's, okay, well, um. Well, so, so we will, we will keep all of these charities, we'll keep everyone on the list for now. And we'll agree that, that whatever number we arrive at, they'll get the same share of it. And then, um, we can, we can look at that number itself.
In the budget, instead of right now?
I mean, I, I would, I, I.
Got it.
I, I think, do we want, do we really want to keep the same ratio and we really want to give $3,000 for Meals on Wheels? They have a lot of other people they get money from besides us.
What, what's your goal, Mary? Um, do you want to?
Want to save money at the moment.
Right, right, but it's kind of hard to do it in a thoughtful manner tonight unless you, you know of someone you want to take off. I mean, Meals on Wheels?
So can I just suggest, instead of the pro rata, why don't we just agree that for the budget cycle, we put $15,000 in the budget? And when we get to the actual budget, we can, if we need to dig in because we're going, "Oh my God, we need another $2,000 from someplace", we can dig into this and, and break it apart, but we don't have to do. Yeah, I think it's fine. I mean, other than, I, I would like some explanation of what CERT wants to do with the money.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Right, I just, I think that's just fiscally sound.
I think that's just, I think they've been.
Is there any way that we can agree? Because I kind of, like, I'm listening, I don't have a hugely strong opinion. When we start looking at the budget, this is going to look like a very small amount of money, relatively speaking. Do we go down to, do we say 15? And out of respect for the fact that we are going to have to sharpen our pencils this year, we go with pro rata and we commit to scrubbing this, you know, more proactively when we have more time and hopefully more capacity next year. That's what I would propose.
I, I would also say, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but Zoom seems to be failing. I just got a network connection failure. I got a little worried. Yeah. So.
I always have issues on my phone right now.
Coming and going, like it keeps restarting itself, so I just thought I'd let you know. I don't know.
Maybe it's time to go.
See anyone on there?
Yeah, we have 17 attendees.
Okay, we still have 17 people, so it's, it's, somebody's there.
Okay, good.
Um, apologies at home if you're having any technical difficulties and we are here.
All right, so, okay, so.
So, do I make a question for that?
Yeah, can you restate that in a?
Yeah.
Sixty?
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve $15,000 allocating in a pro rata way.
And would you accept a friendly amendment to just get clarity on CERT?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm good. Second, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Nay.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Liaison reports? Uh, the liaison reports are in the council packet. Does anyone have anything they want to pull or comment on? Okay, is there any public comment on liaison reports, item seven?
There are no hands raised on this.
Okay. Good. Okay, uh, no comments here either. Okay, item eight is the town manager's report.
Thank you. Uh, nothing to report, but I do want to note that, uh, out of our sheriff's, uh, contract study session, Mark, uh, Captain Mark Meyer indicated that they'll be doing a show and tell open house. And candidly, right now, that's scheduled for May 24th, uh, same day as the council meeting, before the council meeting. So, they'll have some patrol cars, uh, most motorcycle units, some of the SWAT vehicles and some drones and potential, uh, I know we talked about a, uh, fentanyl presentation if we wanted that too. So that's, that's, uh, more to come, but we're going to promote the event. And right now, it's set for, uh, May 24th. We invite anyone here to come.
My understanding is it was going to be part that, part, um, uh, Q and A with community members about the sheriff contract. Is that still the plan?
That's what we requested. Mark said that he wanted to have the questions at the council meeting versus outside. So that's still something I'm still talking to it about.
Okay. This was in response to, uh, community feedback about having another opportunity for, um, more Q and A on the sheriff's contract that came up last time. And I thought we had come up with an idea where we were going to do both at the same time, but, because we still need to get that in, so.
Yes, he, I'm, I'm in communications with him and he kind of said, he suggested that we do it during the council meeting and then we'll push back and say, "Can we do it, uh, the Q and A outside also?"
Yeah, I think, well, regardless, the request was that it not be in a council meeting because this format is so, um, limited. And so what I thought I heard was that the request was to be more like the neighbor, well, and also more like the neighborhood watch. Oh, I couldn't be at, like, a month ago.
Yeah, the, the, well, the, the open house, I called it open. We had, we had the, this, the sheriff was here with six, the, the captain was here with five or six deputies.
It took questions.
It's a gathering, it was a community gathering.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I thought the vision, what it was going to be a hybrid of like the community gathering for opportunities about the sheriff's contract plus the show and tell, like a hybrid.
So I'll talk to Mark, I'll definitely talk to Mark about that. Because what, what he was proposing is the show and tell, because he has certain personnel that's out there. But I, what I'll do is I'll request that Mark be out there to, to provide the question and answer that we're looking for.
It would be nice to do it all together and then, then that's on the agenda. We're talking about the sheriff's contract that night. So that'll happen then before we talk about it again.
I agree, that's what we were hoping for.
I have a question on how we're going to forward this, and it may be inappropriate, so just stopping at time. The, uh, emergency, the location of the radio for, uh, from the emergency preparedness. Is there any chance we can get that on the Cal Water, uh, site on, interested? What's happening with that?
Yeah, so I gave.
Got in a number of letters and, uh, I just wanted to have everybody be on the same page about how we were responding. And they're saying that they're going to put it by Town Hall, which won't give us good coverage.
So I, I gave a short presentation at the, uh, EPC. And there are some issues at the Cal Water tank. Uh, mainly, uh, mainly, they, they indicated, did we ask the neighbors, it was it okay to place some kind of structure there? And we have not. And there is, they're concerned about bad, bad publicity also. Because they, they had a cell site that was scheduled there, I think about 10 years ago, and that wasn't very well received by the residents there. So that's, that's the first issue. The second issue being, uh, the project was described as pretty small to them at the very beginning and it grew to something bigger than they thought. So, uh, that's where we're at with Cal Water right now.
Oh, so Cal Water's been outgrown. I mean, the site, they're not accepting the site.
Um, yes, a little background, we, we've been talking to Cal Water, staff has been talking to Cal Water for two or three years, I think. I mean, it's been, it's been, I don't remember when the radio got moved out of, out of, off of town. So the, the AM radio lived at Town Center for several years, since probably 2013 or 14, I think. And then it got moved to, to someone's house because they wanted better coverage. Uh, and they wanted to move it to Cal Water. Cal Water, over two years plus, I think, um, has basically been very mostly hesitant about this. So, so 10 years ago, we did have a knockdown, dragout battle over a cell tower at Peak Lane. And what would probably happen normally is if Cal Water was, wanted to do this, they would basically be an applicant. And they'd come to us, or they come to, they probably, last time I went to the ASC, it was, I was, it was my first year in ASC when that happened last time. So Cal Water would be the applicant. They'd come to us and say, "We want to put the AM radio power here." And then we'd have public, we'd outreach that way. But because Cal Water has not wanted to move forward or has hesitation to move forward, that hasn't happened. So we're sort of at this point where it's, Cal Water's very reluctant. I think the EPC has agreed that they want to move it back to Town Center with slightly better antenna so that we get as good a coverage. I mean, you know, Howard and the team tested it, Howard and a couple of the work guys tested it 10 years ago and, and got coverage most of town, right?
We, we drove around almost every street with a truck and a truck and a radio and we got it everywhere.
Yeah. When it was, when the antenna was where? Here?
Right next to Town Hall.
Okay.
But you're okay with it being in Town Hall?
We built a site for it 10 years ago, so we've got a transmitter. It's, it's not, it's not, I mean, up in the hills might be better. I, I agree that there could be a better site, but it's, you know, we need Cal Water to agree to it.
And we tried to pressure them in the.
I wouldn't say pressure, but we, we, we tried to make them comfortable with it.
So the EPC did send me an email to request to bring it back to the town, Town Hall. Uh, I think it's a little different antenna, but I have to review it and get back to them. There's, 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 there's some other details that we have to go through.
Another question on Howard's report. What comments on Howard's report?
There's one in there.
Rita?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment so late, but I, I feel, uh, I would be doing a disservice if I didn't mention the home robbery a few Fridays ago at 5:00 AM off of West Ridge that, um, everyone found out about on the news, on the Cron News. And then a couple of days later in the, in the newspaper, but no notice was sent out. But I can tell you about every car accident in Millbrae and I can tell you about every senior person that's wandering in another town. But, um, nothing about a robbery that basically happened, you know, two blocks from my home and when it happened. And if that could be discussed with the, you know, the Sheriff's Department, I had contacted them. I couldn't get any information from them. Uh, but who would, we then contact? Uh, if that could be, you know, shared with the residents, that would be really great. And I know they said that somebody had been arrested and everyone was happy someone had been arrested, but it would have been really wonderful to have that information that day. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Question about that, uh, who's going to replace Gary Nelson?
Uh, Kevin Walsh. He's already replaced him.
He, he's also over there.
Um, I believe so. He's been, he's been helping Gary with the trailer and the radar for several years, yeah. Uh, any other comments or questions?
I moved it to him.
For a second. On favor. Good night, everyone. Thank you.